Good evening, welcome back to our May 22 Board of Selectmen meeting. We're back in open session now. We will start the meeting with a Pledge of Allegiance, please. Everybody would join me.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to declare the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is the swearing-in of public officials. We had an election the other day. Congratulations to Eric and Norm and Joe. I don't see Joe here tonight, but Phil Gardett, our town clerk, will swear them in.
So if you both want to come up and join me? Congrats on your reelection.
Is Joe coming?
I haven't heard from him.
Has he? He has not been sworn in at your office?
He hasn't been sworn in yet.
Okay.
You want to, gentlemen, raise your right hands?
Mm-hmm.
And just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties to which I've been elected and abide by the laws of the town of Yarmouth and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So help me God.
And the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. So the first item on the agenda is public announcements and comments. Is there anybody here that would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Holly, and I have an issue-
Holly, what's your last name?
Shaker.
Shaker?
Mm-hmm.
You live in Yarmouth, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay.
I have an issue with the eyesaws of personal homes, not blight issues, in the town that have been, seem to be growing more and more. I left some pictures here for you to view of a few properties that I took, driving around just in a small radius, and I was wondering if there's a way that we can put some kind of ordinance together like some of the other towns. I've done a lot of research, and I've got a lot of material that I would like to share with you guys at some point, if any of you would like to meet with me at some time, or somebody. I have talked to the building inspector, the health department, the town administrator. They've all been very helpful, and the building inspector has been trying to work on this himself, but I think it'd be very good for the town if we have some kind of ordinance put together and keep it short, simple, and direct, because I don't think it's fair to people like myself who are invested in property, and you have to live next door to somebody who has, not like an old lawnmower outside, I'm talking about a lot of junk, a lot of stuff. And I also think that there should be some kind of time limit on things that people put outside for free. Sometimes things are left outside two, three weeks in front of a house, old chairs, I've seen mattresses, I've seen air conditioners, junk. You know, people might not want to take a dump or don't want to pay to take it to dump, they want to try to give it away, but there should be a time limit. I don't think it should be out there for weeks and weeks between the stuff on the side of the road that's for free and all the houses that are blight. In the eight years that I've been here, I just see that it's more and more. I have six houses on my street, on my side of the street. Three of them are blight with stuff, junk, and there's pictures that I left. So if there's something that I can help, I'm willing to volunteer the time and do the research and gather material to see if we can put some kind of ordinance together in the near future, because I just feel Yarmouth has just, has changed over the few years. Used to drive down the road, there'd be one house that was kind of junk outside and stuff. Now you drive down the street and there's two or three houses, and you don't have to go far to see, you know, to see them. So I'm just asking if you guys would consider putting together some kind of ordinance. You know, I know it's difficult, and there's people that are handicapped and elderly that, you know, there's issues with, but maybe we can get volunteers or Cub Scouts to come in and help or something to clean up a yard. I just feel it's not fair to people who invested. You know, some of these houses that I've taken pictures of are next to houses that are like $450,000 homes, and they got, you know, all kinds of junk in the yard.
Ms. Shaker, you've addressed us before for this. You were here last year, I believe.
Yes, I was here a year or two years ago.
I'm sorry, yep.
And really not much has been done, but I see more of the same thing. And it's really, it's kind of sad to think about it, because it lowers the tax value of our homes, and now the homeowners insurance are asking you, do you live in 100 feet of a blight home? And I have documentation for that. So that can affect your home in many ways, and everyone says, oh, everybody has rights. Well, we have rights. I have rights. I, you know, I don't expect everybody's yard to look like mine, but I do expect to, you know, have it, because it attracts rats. One of the houses next to me has, you know, water buckets full of water. It's in a, the guy isn't there in the house, and it's mosquitoes, and it's just, I just don't think it's fair. And I think with all these other towns, and I have a lot of newspaper articles and research in this envelope, that we can work with to put something together, and I think simple is sell. Simple is better. The more you put in it, the more complicated loopholes everybody gets, and it's just, it's hard. And I know the building inspector has been working very hard with me. Anytime I went to him with anything, he's, you know, checked it out for me and stuff, but his hands are tied, because we don't have an ordinance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate your time, and perhaps we'll have an agenda item upcoming with Mark, so we can-
I'd be glad to sit down with anybody and give them this, so they can take it and just look at it.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Vida?
I agree with this lady, and I think that if these kinds of things are not nipped in the butt, they just sort of are passed over and not, as I said, nipped in the butt, they become epidemic. One person starts, and the next one thinks, well, I can throw something out. I mean, and then the next thing you know, you have instead of one, you have three houses, you know? So it's something that probably should be taken care of. Okay, so apparently there's no new school agreement, is that right?
It's on our agenda tonight to discuss.
Well, last night, we were given the impression that you're ready to turn the whole thing over back to the school committee, and the school committee, of course, has no right to do anything about the agreement. They would have the right to approve it, but in terms of fiddling with it, that has to be done between the two towns, if I'm not mistaken. So if that's the case, we're back to square one again. That means they're going back to the existing agreement. And, you know, the new building project is another thing that has been hijacked, as I told you some time ago, by Dennis, and I don't know why we don't seem to take more of, not more of an interest, but be stronger about the fact that, you know, we're the ones who are paying for this, and we should have the upper hand in it. But in the meantime, as I said, it seems to have been hijacked by Dennis. So I, I think it really is time for us to consider de- regionalization very seriously. And I don't remember where this was said, but someone mentioned that there were a couple of regional districts that are suing the state, I believe, or something like that. Why don't we get some information from them and see what's going on? Because we can't go on this way. The taxpayers just cannot sustain this kind of situation anymore. I really think we need to do something about it and move quickly, because, you know, they're on the building, they've got the schedule, and they're going with it full speed ahead. Now it's somewhat lighter, I guess. The pickleball nonsense. Okay, look, it's a fad, and I'll tell you something. Those of us who are shelling out $10 a session for yoga, which has been in existence for thousands of years and has, you know, health benefits that are already kind of spoken for, and for these people to come in and into the town meeting and say, oh, I lost pounds, and I, and this is healthy and whatever, in any way, it's a fad.
So is yoga, I guess.
And so in the meantime, I think those of us who are in yoga class, if you don't start charging those people fees, we are going to come in here and ask that you pick up our $10 fee for yoga class.
Yeah, okay.
No, seriously.
I appreciate it. Anything else?
That's it for now.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to address the board? If there are people here for the Drive-In Site Utilization Committee, we will not be taking public comment at that time, so if there's something you'd like to say, now's your time. Joyce.
Joyce Flynn, congratulations to the new board for the next year. You look somewhat more familiar, but maybe a little more suntan than you were before.
They look aged, don't they?
Aged?
I know you did. You did have hair when you started.
Well, I'm here tonight as your rep from the Cape Light Compact to offer a few time-valued offers with energy efficiency. There's a special on if you have a dehumidifier and you'd like to get rid of it. I guess if people are throwing dehumidifiers in their yard, this could be helpful. There's a turn-in event on June 9 in East Falmouth and on June 16 in Orleans. Yarmouth had last year's event, which is why we don't have one here. Both are held in partnership with Crane Appliance. If you drop off your old dehumidifier, it's free, and you also receive a $30 rebate toward a new, more energy-efficient dehumidifier. The other interesting thing for appliances is that the Cape Light Compact is currently doubling the incentive to recycle a refrigerator and a freezer, so that if you have a residential-sized refrigerator or freezer that's working, you can schedule a free pickup by calling this number, 877-889-4761, and it will be recycled. If you call this number between May 14 and June 15, you'll receive a $100 rebate instead of the standard $50 offer. Now, that's not a rebate that only would apply to a new refrigerator. That one you receive as a Visa gift card, so it can be applied toward anything. Then, in addition to those, we have some news on the power supply front. I wanted you to know that the Compact's participation in the Eversource rate case, which dragged on at the DPU for a couple of years, this was all resolved in early 2018, and that resulted in $8 million in savings to southeastern Mass. electric customers, including the Cape and Vineyard. And those, we didn't get everything we wanted in terms of what we pointed out that was unfriendly to consumers, but what we did get with the $8 million were savings related to transition charge consolidation. Then the final thing I'd like to draw to your attention. We've had some questions from people who weren't sure what was intended by the Main Streets Initiative, which is the special for small businesses in the spring getting ready for the summer. That doesn't just apply to tourist businesses or small restaurants that are closed most of the year. That would conceivably apply, say, to a law office suite, as long as those people had their own electric account, or an architect's office, as long as it had its own electric account. Now, the ceiling level for that is 60,000 kilowatt-hours per year, but you can see that with a small office spread over 12 months, especially if you ever closed, you know, for a vacation period, you might well be eligible for that. If you are, the last day you can call on that is Monday, May 28, and you call for an audit at the audit number, and the audit number, I can never remember this, is 800-797-6699. I would say, because I'm an oldest daughter, why don't you call on Friday instead of on Memorial Day, when you'll only get voicemail? So that's it for the Compact. I'm giving you all copies of what I just said, because I know you're out and about with the public, and you're more likely to physically encounter their questions than I am, although the recycling center is usually a pretty good place. Oh, Dan has this already. Yeah, in your emails from the Compact.
Thank you, Joyce. Is there anybody else who-
I never get any free pens either. This is one of them.
Oh, and I forgot to say-
People at home can't hear you.
Watch next week for a really happy announcement about power supply rates. Just saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, first, is there anybody else who'd like to address the board before I go back to you, Vida? Seeing nobody.
I want to ask her a question.
Well, go ahead. You don't need us to do that. We'll move on to our next.
Yes.
Our next item is Board of Selectmen reorganization. In the packet, there is a listing, and we will start by accepting nominations.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to leave things the way they are unless there's anybody that doesn't want to do something for any particular reason.
Is that a, is that a motion?
I think I said-
Is there a second to that motion?
I move, I move to nominate Norm as chairman.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? Norm?
I don't have any discussion. I know we had talked last year about rotating the chairman position, and I'm fine either way, so, you know, whatever the board wishes.
If I can just speak to that, I think that would be a good idea. That's the reason why I'm taking the position that I am. I think you've done a great job, Tracy, as a chairman, but I think, for me, as a matter of policy for the board, I think it's actually for us to rotate the chairmanship every year.
I agree. Any other discussion on that motion? Falls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vice Chair? Oh, Norm, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we, I know, Tracy, you don't like this chair.
I do not like that chair. My legs are cold.
I want to, maybe we can defer to the next meeting and let you-
You can chair from there.
That's, okay, fine. All right. Very good. All right, well, let's go through the rest of the list. Did we want to leave, was the motion to leave everything the same in regard to, do we want to do that, or are there-
Well, we need a, we need a new nomination for vice chair, since you're the vice chairman and the chairman.
That's correct. All right, do we have a nomination for vice chairman?
I'll nominate Mike.
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
My discussion?
Sure.
By only, I'm not opposed to Mike, but what would happen if Mike were ever to have to chair a meeting where there was a licensing thing on the agenda?
Well, we may have to switch licensing chairs.
No, I would just chair that, too.
Okay. As long as it's okay.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I'll second it. Has it been seconded yet?
I think it has been seconded, yes. Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm staying.
All right, so Mike is vice chair. Clerk, do we continue down the line?
Sure.
I make a motion that we leave all of the remaining positions as they are.
I don't know about that.
Okay, which ones do you-
Well, I just think with Norm-
You want to go through every one of them? That's fine.
No, I don't need to go through every one of them. I think that-
I withdraw my motion.
I'd be willing to take what I can from Norm, and Norm's got a lot on his plate.
All right, I nominate Eric for clerk.
Second.
All right, any other nominations? All right, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Eric is clerk. Licensing board, Mike, you already stated you're interested in continuing that decision. Okay, anyone nominate, Mike?
I'll nominate Mike to continue on as licensing chair.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Appointments Chair, Mark, you're interested in continuing?
I'm cool with that.
Okay, any nomination on that?
I nominate Mark for Appointments Chair.
Second.
All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Emulants Waiver Administration, Mark again.
I'm fine. Yep.
Okay. Again, nomination.
Nominate it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 DY Liaison Primary, Tracy, you were in that post this last year, do you want to continue on that?
Sure.
She was in that post. What about she was in that position? I nominate Tracy Post for that post.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. DY Contract Negotiations Team.
Norm, is this, I'm not sure how much time you're going to have to be able to do all of this. If there's something you want to get off your plate, I think that-
You've got plenty of time.
I hope you don't plan on any vacations this year.
I would hope that we can wind this down, and I'm comfortable either way. You know, the other, actually, this is incomplete, because Mike is on the team as well.
Right.
So, you know, I'm-
That's not the con, oh, that's true. You're on the contract, you're, Mike is on the school committee agreement. This is the contract negotiation.
Oh, different, different one. I thought the same thing, Norm, but it's different.
So I don't, I personally don't, I don't know if it's good to be the chairman and to participate in all of those as well.
I would agree with that. There's a meeting tomorrow.
But the problem, normally, Norman is already invested, and I mean, it's not going to continue forever. I mean, it will end eventually.
And it's getting fairly close.
I don't think it's right to pull the rep halfway through.
No, not on the particular one, but I'm just saying, if there's anything that you want to give up, I think that, you know, I'm willing to step up for you.
Well, I think Eric's point on that is true. I was planning on going, and I see no reason to not continue with that, so.
I'll nominate Norm for the DY Contract Negotiating Team.
Second.
Second. Sorry.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Scholarship Committee Alternate, alternate?
I don't know why, but the meetings this week as well. It's one meeting a year. I would like to continue to do that.
I nominate Tracy for the Scholarship Committee.
Second.
All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Housing Trust.
I'll nominate Norm for the Affordable Housing Trust, if he wants to do it.
I'll take that. I mean, I don't have anything. I'll take that if you want to.
All right. It probably would be a good transition at some point. There is a formal process that that has to go through in terms of the committee selection and appointment. Karen, do you have any?
I know that you just need to, we need to formalize it, and then it gets recorded at the, I think at the registry.
Yeah. Okay. That would make some sense, I think.
Okay, I withdraw my nomination. I'll nominate Eric to be the Affordable Housing Trust member.
Second?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And Airport Representative, Mike Stone.
I'll do it if no one else wants to do it.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both. Okay. All right. There is one other position, is MPO is-
That's an election.
And, meeting yesterday, excuse me?
That's an election.
That's an election, okay. We should have an alternate, and, you know, they had asked for that, or requested that a couple of months ago, and I ignored it at that time, but certainly, you know, if anyone's interested in being in-
I would be happy to be an alternate if you can't make the meeting.
I thought the way that it was going to work is typically we alternate Dennis, a Dennis-elected official being nominated, and this year is Yarmouth, which would mean the alternate would be a Dennis selectman. So next year, when it's a Yarmouth selectman, I thought the alternate would be, I thought that's how we were doing it. Because Cheryl came, and she was asking for an alternate from us when she was appointed. So I think when, now that you're elected, the alternate should come from them. That way, there's some continuity in election years.
It might be a good idea just to double-check on that.
Yeah, okay, all right, that's fine. We can do that. I think we're set with the positions at this point. Any other ones that we need to cover? Does anyone know? Okay. Then let's move to our next agenda item, the CIVAC Solar Lease Vote. Dan?
Some months back, we had a presentation on the solar leases at the fire stations, and there's been a lot of legal correspondence back and forth between town attorney and CIVAC attorney, and we've got a finished product for you here, so Liz Argo's here to talk about it.
Hi, Liz Argo, CIVAC manager. Yes, and Dan just summed it up very well, and there was only really one, well, there were three questions that Dan put forward to me that may still be remaining, so I can hit on them very quickly, and then they won't be concerns if they are. So the first one, as he pointed out, is what, how is, how is work that might need to be done on a town facility's roof handled if photovoltaics are on there? And it is spoken to in the lease, and there's a time limit for that work, but there is an ability to do the work that you need to do. If it goes longer than anticipated, then there's a compensation to the vendor, because he's basically losing money, or she is losing money, as long as the PV's not producing, as are you. So it behooves everybody to get everything in place. We've already had this happen. Everything gets in place, you do your RFP, you get your contractor on board, then you remove the PV, get the work done, you put it right back on. So I hope that takes care of that concern. Any questions on that one?
There was a question about the suitability of the roofs for these structures, and we were told by Dick Core and Phil Simonian that these roofs are in good shape, and I believe Dick did some additional work recently to one of the roofs.
That I don't know. That would be internal, yeah. So the second point that Dan put forward is, what if the operator, developer, goes out of business? In the event of a default by the developer, and again, this is in the lease, the host, which is you all in the lease, may elect but is not required to purchase the PV system. And that goes into, you also have CIVAC, which has an option to purchase the PV system, which we'll talk about as well. And there are damages, as long as the, the purchase price has to be offset by monetary damages and so on, so that's been very well-vetted, and you're covered if a developer defaults, and there is decommissioning in place. Any questions on that one? Okay. And then the last one that I had was town ownership after the term. We have options to purchase the system at years 10, 12, 15, and 17, and through lease, we actually amended- And through Lisa, we actually amended the agreements that have been in place for years and years, where actually C VAC exercised the first option for purchase. And in this agreement, Lisa asked us to make the town have... The town can exercise first right of refusal for purchase of the PV system. So that's in your terms and conditions in the exhibit of the intergovernmental agreement. Again, there... If the town chooses not to, C VAC is standing behind you. And C VAC, of course, is all the towns. And there may be some way that all the towns can band together, and we can bond and so on as an agency that can go after that kind of funding. And we could buy the system if the town chose not to. And of course, any advantage that C VAC reaps flows back to the towns. So, but Lisa did give you the right of first refusal. So I think that's it.
If I might too, because this is kind of new terrain, there hasn't been too many solar arrays that have been out there for an extended period of time. We were... When I was working for the state, I'm aware of a number of panel arrays that have some longevity on them. And there's some significant viability that can occur many, many years out. So you'll see more of this conversation as the years go on, more and more towns. Most of these contracts had a 15- or 20-year...
20 for C VAC, all 20.
Yeah, so at some point, they tend to be... They're so far so good, they've been holding up pretty good for the duration, so...
And we do have some that are reaching their... The end of their term, because we have our C VAC seven. Yarmouth does not have one of those, but those are seven projects on the roofs of some of the schools in the area. And they are reaching the end of their term, because that was a 15-year term. So it'll be our... We will have some experience in end of terms coming soon.
So these are the...
20.
These are 20?
Yes, but I GAs, intergovernmental agreements, have to have a 25-year agreement option. So these are 20 with the vendors with an option to extend to meet the IGA requirement for five years, another five years.
So what I'd be looking for, Mr. Chairman, would be a motion to allow the town administrator to sign off on these agreements.
Do we have further discussion or questions for Liz?
I want to know if the town council has reviewed all these documents.
Yeah, ironically, no.
Extensively.
Council, or our council's their council to two different lawyers. But they have been on this topic since the time we walked out of that meeting, I think it was back in January, for months on this topic. And they're both in concurrence that we've got a good, sound agreement in place.
Yeah, and in fact, Lisa Mead, who represented you in this, represented Yarmouth in these agreements, also represents Chatham. And she had already signed off on the Chatham agreements back in September. So then she took these on again for... On your behalf, and we made yet another change, but she's been at these twice now.
What's the word disclosure at this point?
I'll make a motion to authorize the county administrator to enter into these agreements.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Norman, Eric.
All right, I guess we have a online dog licenses update coming up.
Phil Gutett's here. Just to update you a little bit, the Finance Department has continually gone down an effort to automate a lot of basic town functions. So this is the next rollout that we wanted to share with you as it relates to City Hall Systems Program. And there's others on the queue for later in the year that will be rolling out as well.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. So anyone that's watching that has a dog, this will be of interest. So as Dan was just mentioning, our online payment vendor, City Hall Systems, they provide that one-stop shop. So they give the ability to make multiple purchases and add to your cart, similar to amazon.com. So you can pay your real estate bill, you can buy beach stickers, disposal, and now you can purchase your dog license. And this was rolled out... There was so far three big rollouts, thanks to the hard work of the Finance Department. The first was with the real estate, neck size tax. The second was with beach and disposal stickers. And now the third is with dog licenses. And so just... So essentially, it's what we've kind of talked about in the past. You can purchase, order online, you can mail in, or you can phone in through City Hall Systems, and they'll fulfill the order for you. And so what simply we've been doing to promote this, we've online and in-town documentation. We've sent email blasts to all current owners that provide emails. And then we've mailed, filled out applications to dog owners. It's on our website, and we have instructional videos, thanks to Chrissy Hevner and Dave Allen of the Finance Department. And then promoting it through this evening's discussion. And then just lastly, if you were to go to some fun facts and tidbits about dogs in Yarmouth, if you were to go to the Clerk's website, the three most popular dog names in Yarmouth are Bella, Max, and Molly. And then the three most popular dog breeds in Yarmouth are the Labrador Retriever, the Golden Retriever, and then the German Shepherd. So that's it. If you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question, Phil.
Sure.
On the online and in-town documentation, how does that work for people that are doing this for the first time and don't have anything in the archives?
Sure, so there's many... So if you were to click on... Go to our website, you click on Online Services. The very first link that you have to click on would be for all your online purchases through City Hall Systems. You dig a little deeper through our town website and through some other... And through other links throughout the town website. There are instructional videos. So for instance, if you were to go to the Clerk's website, or the Clerk's section of the website, you'll see instructional videos for these... For all these purchases. So that's how they would... They can get to it.
Okay, well, something like, say, a beach sticker, you need a car registration.
Correct.
So you don't have that in the system, I understand, right now. Is that true?
So you can... You have the ability to upload a vehicle registration through the system.
Okay, so people have to have access to scanners?
Yeah, they do.
Be able to get the underlying documentation to you? And if they didn't, they'd have to bring it into Town Hall. Is that how it works?
Well, correct, but if they were to call in, actually, if they were to... This online system, it... What's the best way to describe this? It checks with... If your vehicle is garaged in the state of Massachusetts, it can confirm that. So if... So sometime... It's a little tricky if it's a second home. If it's a second homeowner here in Yarmouth, but generally, it does that. And then similar for the dog licenses, you have that ability to upload the rabies certificate online. And so you can... They can call in if they're having trouble online. They can place their order online, and through the mail, as I said, they can... We sent them pre-filled out applications, so they can just simply send them in to be fulfilled. And then, of course, we do it over the counter.
What's the turnaround time generally to get the license?
I would say about a week and a half to get it.
Is that pretty much true for any kind of item you order, beach sticker, dump sticker, whatever?
I would say so. We did have a couple of issues as we approach, like the deadline. So Memorial Day weekend's a very busy weekend. Fourth of July will be busy. But approaching Memorial Day weekend, we were getting calls that, hey, we want to get our beach sticker. And so we, as we did some research, we found that our vendor would wait five days to wait for a check to clear if you paid by check. So some of these people wouldn't be getting their stickers in a timely manner. So what we did was, we decided, we made a call that instead of having, holding up that... Instead of holding up the sticker for waiting for that five-day period for the check to clear, if the check bounced, we would... The town, like we've always had in the past, we would chase after... We would, you know, we would chase after the money. And so, because we want to make sure that... And that's a very low number of instances that that happens. But because we're getting towards Memorial Day weekend, most... We just don't want to hold their stickers up for five days. We also, because of the weekend coming in, we've spoken with Dick Court. And so if you just show your receipt that you purchased online, you'll be allowed into the beach for the weekend. Sure.
So in the case of a dog license, they're going to get the actual license in the mail?
Yep. Yeah, the metal license, about a week and a half to get it.
Okay. I did a shellfish license on the mail. It was like, all of a sudden, I remembered I was going to go down to the beach and remembered I needed a shellfish license, and I was able to print off...
Yes.
The shellfish license. I believe that's the shellfish license.
Correct, yep.
All right.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
How long does it normally take to download the site? Because I'm checking right now, and the spin wheel keeps going.
Well, depending upon your Wi-Fi connection, the connection, it's very quick.
Then I think maybe we have a Wi-Fi connection problem here at Town Hall. Would that be the problem? No, I just...
It's working?
I figured I'd search my dogs. I have two dogs.
Search your dogs?
Yeah, so I'm searching, but nothing's happening.
Okay, I'll look into that, yeah.
File a complaint?
Yeah, I'll note that, and I'll get back to it.
Yeah, it might be worth looking at. At least either something's wrong here, or there's something that needs to be done with our Wi-Fi in here.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, I think the next item is a review of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. Dan, did you have some specific topics?
I do, Mr. Chairman. There's a handout going around. It's got some considerations from our perspective and administration. I also asked the Clerk, Mr. Gutett, to go back to 2005 attendance. So every year since 2005 is listed here. And Mr. Dwelly and Mr. Horgan had done a survey. There was cards filled out that day, and there was some online participation. The results of the survey are also enclosed. So if you wanted to start with how I broke down considerations, I broke it into the warrant itself, the D Y school budget, as it relates to that, because a lot of people get confused on that. The 8:00 AM Board of Selectmen's meeting, some of the recommendations there, the meeting itself. And these are from conversations I've had with people and different board members and members of the public. We put this together as it relates. So I'll just walk you through each topic, and certainly, these are all up for discussion. So last year and this year, we generated 400 copies of the warrant. We did make them available ahead of time, both last year and this year. If you look at the attendance for this year versus last year, we were significantly up in daily attendance for the town meeting, which would likely account for why we were short at the door. So there's a couple of things we looked at on how to address that. We could come up with a safe number to print. People do like to get a copy of it in advance, so we'd like to have it still be available at different locations across the town. But we do know of at least one town that does a mailing of the warrant ahead of the election, which is not a bad idea. You go to... You send it out to the households in advance. And that would, you know, put it in everybody's household, you know, what's going on. I asked Phil to run the numbers on that. There was 12,206 households in the town. Bulk rate is listed there, and the postage would roughly be in the neighborhood of $4,600. If we were to go that route, I think that's excessive, though. My own personal opinion would be, I think if we were to come up with a number of, you know, 600 or 700, you know, and the cost per production per unit isn't hugely significant. But in the end, if you got a few left over, it's not, you know, a big problem to have. It's better to have some leftover than not enough, as we learned.
Yeah, that's the first time... I've been going to town meeting forever. It's the first time I've ever heard people complain about lack of copies of the warrant.
Yep, so in looking at the attendance, there's a wide variety. And, you know, 400 was good in 2017, it wasn't good enough in 2018, so I apologize for that. We just had, for whatever reason, a lot of folks got driven that day. The attendance was much more significant.
Yeah, I don't think mailing them is a good option, because I think they'll get discarded or, you know, people won't bring them with them, and I think that's kind of a waste.
I just wanted to give you the range, like from an extreme to something in between.
Well, it's downloadable on the town website.
That's true.
So anybody who wants it can...
One of the things I'm sensitive is, you know, we have a population in town that is technologically challenged. Selectman Forrest not included here. He's very adept. It's our own internet connection. But, you know, we do talk about that a lot in town government as it relates to, you know, how fast we can move to an electronic platform, and what's the acceptance of the population. And that, I think, is certainly a challenge. So nothing has to be acted on tonight, for sure. It's just something I wanted to get in your hands. We can come back to that in the future to say, hey, you know, what would be a good number to print up, or how you wanted to do that. Additionally, on the warrant, one of the things that we can definitely do is put explanations as it relates to the articles. I think that would help people understand. It can be much like an abbreviated version of what typically you read to explain that. And I think if it's in their hands ahead of time particularly, it makes that situation a lot easier. The other thing that was a challenge in to get the warrant out, it does go through a number of iterations. And the D Y situation definitely threw us a curve. And unfortunately, again, I apologize for this, the version that was available on the internet did not get the latest update. And that's a problem, and that's on us. So the next time out, it will not get up to the internet for the public to have until we know it's final. And that means the school budget's been done, we can agree to what that is, and then that's when it'll go. And it'll just have to be a little bit later than it normally would have been in the past. The other issue was, there was a number of withdrawn articles. And then, so we have a process now where we can bring those off, and we'll just vote. So unless it's withdrawn in that interim from January 30th to town meeting, everything should be much more condensed when possible. So we had a lot of potential articles in play, TPW building, landfill, that caused a lot of different things to be taken off at the last minute. So that, we will try not to do that again.
What was the cost of our annual town meeting?
You know, I just got the bill...
There's a lot of people talking about splitting it into two, but there was a cost...
Surprisingly, it wasn't that expensive. I thought it was well under $1,000 from the school department. I want to say it was about $400, $500 was the cost.
How much did it cost to print the warrants? I mean, every time you have a... I thought the cost of a town meeting, we were told, was somewhere around $5,000.
No, it's not that much.
An election.
An election.
A town meeting.
No. I don't have the numbers. I'll get that number to you, and I'll send it to you by email. But that's... It's not that expensive, surprisingly. I want to say that bill was just around $1,000. So we're compiling that now, those costs, so that we have a standalone item within the budget that says, you know, town meeting cost. So it's very clearly delineated how much it costs. So if you want to break it up into two, you would know that much more easily than we could do it now.
There's some records that indicate what generally is the quantity of warrants that we print up.
Well, so, you know, that's a good question. So when I came last year, I asked how many were printed up, and they said that last year, 400 was fine. But it really, if you look at the attendance cycle, you know, the sweet spot for us seems to be around 600, although we did have a couple of years in the last 10, or more than that, 13. That '08, which was maybe something related to a bad budget year, had over 600 attendees. And I understand maybe 2015 was motorcycles and guns, and that drove a lot of people to town meeting. But other than that, 400 in the last, since, you know, 2011, would have been safe if you didn't have pre-handout. But if we want to stay with pre-handout, siphon off like 100, 150 to put at the library, Council on Aging, at Town Hall, that's something. You know, we'd have to have a little bit of a cushion there.
The unit cost can't be that high on those things. I think we should get a generous supply. I think it's unfortunate when we're trying to get more people to come to town meeting, to have anything like that go wrong.
You're absolutely correct.
It discourages people.
One of the things I think would be helpful, and I've been talking about this for a few years, is having... What Dennis does is a pre-meeting, and assembling staff, and allowing us to go through and talk about all the articles and have people ask questions in advance of town meeting. Because I think that that would significantly shorten and answer people's questions that are interested and have some idea of what it's all about before they get there. And hopefully, it would make it more speedy.
Are you talking about with the public asking questions in advance?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could have like the week before, two weeks out, we could rent a cafeteria at the school or something. We could do that.
We could do it here.
A lot of other towns do that.
Yeah, a lot of...
Yeah. Provincetown, one of the things they do in Provincetown is they actually do a mailing to everybody, not with the warrant, but just sort of the highlights of what's town meeting is, some of the highlights of the articles, and some background information, and then if there are online links, or other things that people might want to check out, access to that information as well.
Yeah, one of the recommendations is to develop a summary sheet, key points, and have that available for distribution, yeah.
Right.
Do we collect email addresses of people who are voters?
I doubt that, not unless somebody were to give it to us for a particular reason.
No, but I think in the future, if you want to improve your website, one of the things that you could do is you could create a, a, a town report, or some kind of email list, where just periodically, the town sends notices out to people. I thought, one of the things that I thought was actually very helpful this year, was the town's use of the social media sites, the, the, in fact, you, your stuff that I saw from you, Tracy, information on the warrant, I think you put that on Facebook, the Town of Yarmouth official site had that on there as well, I thought that was very helpful, I think, uh, social media can be used to help sort of get the word out, and help promote some of the alternative methods for, you know, information.
There's also some information on the ballot questions, I think, that Tracy had put up, which was very helpful.
So, I dialogued a little bit with Tracy on this one, that the ballot questions got a little complicated, particularly the Cape Tech one, because it's one of those, you know, there isn't a final number, the number does change due to enrollment, so how much can you really put out there, before you confuse everybody on the whole situation? So, that language that was generated for the paper ballot came from bond counsel from Cape Tech, because they were in charge of that language, it was, it was just, you know, it was a tough call, for those people that are really in tune with numbers, you could explain it, but it did not make, we, we put a document together, and it did not make a, a good soundbite, if you will, it was complicated to explain.
Right, but I think the more information, I, we were a little bit late to the party on that one, I think we probably could have done that a little bit earlier, and got that information out.
The school, though, I was surprised, didn't have a pre-correspondence as it relates, I would have thought there would have been a, uh, something to each 12, of 12 of the towns, here's what your impact looks like in a, in an easy sheet, and that didn't come, you know, and then, of course, we don't know the borrowing term yet, we don't know the percentage rate yet, we only knew the short-term $400,000 number that they're swallowing on their own budget, so there were a lot of unknowns on the Cape Tech for going into the next $75 million borrowing, so.
I think we received an email today, did we not, with regard to someone that was confused by the wording of the...
Yeah, that's correct, that's right.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that was with regard to Cape Tech, or...
Yeah, it was the Cape Tech question.
That was the Cape Tech question, I know, in visiting some of the polls, there were people that were voting, that were raising questions, and the people at the polls did not want to comment, or interpret.
Yeah.
I think they're prohibited from doing so, I think if we had, if we could anticipate some of that, perhaps, and, and have official information available to people.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the challenge, you know, the, the odd thing about that situation is, there was no dollar value attached, and that's confusing to people, you know, that's the first time we've seen that situation, right, so, so then they try to explain in detail, well, we haven't gone out for the full borrowing yet, we don't know the term yet, we don't know the interest rate yet, and then people are gonna be like, well, what are you doing? Because they didn't understand the way the whole legal process works on those borrowings, potentially, you know, so it got complicated, no question about it.
I just think the more information that we can get out in advance, you know, the length of the meeting is, is extremely long, and the fact that there was no lunch, um...
I did have some commentary on that.
I'm surprised that, um...
Yeah, I didn't think that was a good idea.
No, no, I thought that, we needed a break at that point, we'd just been through a long discussion.
Well, he kept talking about a 15-minute break, but it never happened.
So, if I, if you don't mind, if I can get through some of the rest of these for you, the DY school budget is also an area of great confusion for folks, and, so one of the things we talked about, and this, we, it was, we were in a little bit better shape this year in some respects, because the policy that you have related to that, covering up the 2.5%, the student shift, we do, we took care of that, and then the balance was sent over to the, to the proposition 2.5 override, so what we could do next year is put a one-pager together, explaining that, like, as a, like, reaffirming the policy statement on that, and then get that together for the last meeting before town meeting, and then have that language available on social media and at the meeting, so when they come in, that morning, they can read what the board's official policy is, and if you wanted to make a last-minute change, we have the 8:00 AM meeting that you could make an alteration to.
Yeah.
That we could print something off really quickly, if it was a situation that the board wanted to change from that last week's construction.
I think that's important, I think what happened this year was confusing for people, I think that it was consistent with our policy, however, it's different than past practice, the fact that none of the school committee members were there for the discussion even complicated it even more, so I think that we should have a policy to not, not do that the day of town meeting in the future, so that we can at least try to draft something like you're speaking of, that will be helpful.
It does, it, it, it helps people understand the complicated topic, and, you know, one of the changes is, we went back in what was past practice had been, and there'd been a little bit of confusion this year, so, like with citizens petitions, the school committee, the school budget issues, and CPC, folks from those committees did the motions and explanations in past practice, although we switched off back and forth with citizen petitions, so what I've proposed in this document is that we go back to the traditional way, so DY budget, school committee member gets up, they make the motion, they explain it, boom, Cape Tech, school committee person gets up, makes the motion, they explain it, CPC person makes the motion, they explain it, citizen petition, citizens on their own, they do the same thing, and that would help smooth things out, but I think the key is, going into that meeting on funding DY, hopefully we won't be in the same situation again, but somehow I feel that we will, that we speak, you know, pretty clear, we'll, but we could make an amendment, though, if you had to, at the 8:00 AM meeting, we could run another copy off, make some print copies, and we'd be good, so, just to make it, explain it to them.
What I, what I think confused some people, is, including some people on the school committee, and I really don't know why, is when Tracy made the motion and netted out the number in terms of what the town recommended, which was, the budget less the override portion, and people on the school committee were yelling foul, like it's the first time they saw the number, and all, the, the net result of really what she was saying was, we don't approve the figure that the school is proposing, we're good with that number less the override portion, so, again, I didn't see any, any problem with it at all, but I was very surprised that it caused the contention that, you know, that somehow was somewhat a fair surprise.
It was discussed, again, at the school committee meeting last night, that they wanted it looked into our process, and, you know, I think, well, first of all, we had our discussion in a advertised public meeting.
Yep.
That that was where we were gonna take our position.
Yep.
It's unfortunate that it was late in the game, but by all means, members of the school should have and could have been there, they were not. What we did was consistent, like I said, with what our policy was, it was very confusing, however, to the public, but at no point in time did it, did it occur to me that they would not have made that amendment themselves, and...
Clearly not.
They, they didn't, though, so I guess that was the confusion, I, I think it was our assumption that they were going to move the difference.
That was the conversation that we had just before town meeting went off, say, here's the situation, that you, we know what your number is, this is the board's position, here's what the board's willing to cover, make the motion, and I don't know why, why they got all confused and that, but, but they did.
I think there were just too many numbers flying around at the meeting, and, and I think that that's, you know, you know, perhaps our, our starting point should be with what, what the school committee is recommending.
Yeah.
And then pose an amendment.
Go backwards on it, potentially, yeah.
Not a number.
Yeah, I would agree.
So that we're clear, and everybody understands that it's an amendment, to reduce it by the amount of an override, if that's the override.
And that's why, if we get that position paper in order, a week before, at your last meeting before, boom, there it is.
But I think on a big ticket item like the school budget, we should have a separate position paper.
Yeah, absolutely.
Every year.
Yep, I'm with you, this gets very complicated for people to understand, and it's only gonna get the same situation moving forward, I think, so.
I would agree.
Couple of other things related to the 8:00 AM meeting, so going in advance, I'll make sure that the school committee chair has, got a personal invitation to the 8:00 AM meeting, so there's no confusion about anybody not knowing it was going on, and then the second piece, the department heads will be available, or a representative, to answer your questions, if there's some last-minute situations that want to be addressed going into that.
I remember, not this year, but the year before, they were in attendance at the 8 o'clock meeting.
We had a joint meeting, you're right, we had a joint meeting, because they were, we were supposed to take a cut, vote potentially.
So, 8 o'clock AM meetings are not unknown to them, or, you know, on something new, or unfamiliar.
I just want to make sure that we go on record officially.
I think that's a good idea.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. The meeting itself, so one of the things that, you know, the presentations, anything that's going to be up on the screen, it's gotta get to us well in advance of the meeting, we sign off on the final copy, so that there's no alterations or amendments made that day, it gets preloaded on a computer, cannot be changed, without going through approval mechanisms, so we know what goes on there, and then the other thing about that will be, there's a transfer table, that's in Article 2, that has these annual types of raise and appropriate tables, that'll be part of the, because that gets amended very late in the process, that'll be a slide presentation, so people can follow along when Article 2 is written, and then the other thing that I think would make life a little bit easier, is to have a remote computer station operate the projector, in case we have to do something on the fly, we had wifi connection problems, and a whole bunch of other stuff associated with that.
I just have a question with respect to that, did, were there enough staff there at the, the town meeting? I, I got the impression that there was some...
Oh, no, the staff was at the, so, so one of the problems...
But in terms of the technical staff, to handle and...
Yeah, we, so we didn't get a wifi connection, there was, at the same time, live stream, I think, at Town Hall went down, so IT director had to come to Town Hall to get the live stream up, so, I mean, a, a combination of things, right, when it was go time.
Kind of a perfect storm, I guess.
Took place, and so hopefully we'll take care of that before the meeting gets done, ahead of time, so if it's all on the laptop ahead of time, we'll be in good shape. And then, so I just, I explained motions and explanations, to go back to the traditional way it was done, the lunch break, we still work, we struggled with the food and beverage, although Phil did tell me he had a last-minute communication, a new truck vendor might show some interest, so we'll continue to try to do something about that, but that, that continues to really be a problem, is to try to find somebody willing to do some refreshments.
Isn't that an opportunity for Mass River?
It, it could be if you wanted to go down that road, I mean, it's, uh...
You know, we have, we have a couple of food services.
If it's a good golf day, though, you know what I'm saying, it, it could be a challenge for us to staff up there, you know, so...
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah, you have to get enough sandwiches of one for or another, I mean, that's, that's a little challenge.
Well, the first year, we had the truck, well.
Yeah, they didn't want to come back, though.
They didn't.
No.
I wonder what the story is with that.
No, I think it was just, for them, it was a lot of gearing up, they didn't know what to expect, there wasn't as much volume of business, and then they were tied up all day, so, it was just, it, it's a hard thing to gauge, you know? We talked about the available, availability of a summary highlight sheet of key points in the warrant ahead of time, and then, interestingly enough, number eight comes related to some of the survey results, there's some food for thought in the survey, and Chris can walk you through the survey results, kind of a interesting take on what people would like to do going forward in the future.
So, of the people that are responding with regard to the fall and spring session, is that because they want it shorter?
Well, you know, you think about it, you know, it's not lost on me that, you know, six hours on a Saturday, if it's, you know, if it's a beautiful sunny day, and you got, you know, little ones running around, and you're going off to here, there, and every imaginable sport, it's just a tough challenge to decide whether I'm gonna go and do my civic duty at town meeting, or I'm gonna go to soccer practice, baseball, lacrosse, you name it, right? So, there's that aspect of it, I think there's also the aspect of the length of it, we did lose a lot of people by the time we finished up, huge, you know, so there's been some talk, maybe we do the finance articles in the springtime, and do zoning articles in the fall, when they, because they don't have to be in the same schedule, so, I mean, it's up, available for dialogue, whatever you want to do, but I think in general, people like to be relatively in and out, much as they can, you know, it's hard to say for sure.
Well, I'm looking at this survey here, and I'm wondering, where were the 118 people that wanted, that want electronic voting? Because that was a pretty overwhelming vote against it, but yet, I'm looking at the survey, and a significant number of people actually liked the idea, so that needs some explanation.
I think there was some misunderstanding about whether it was gonna invade anyone's privacy, and I, I don't know where that came from, but...
Well, I guess it speaks to the point of the need for providing people information ahead of times, and an explanation, so they can better understand what's being pursued.
Yeah, there was some conversation I heard about, will they be keeping my score, if you will?
Right.
And that wasn't really the issue at all, it's not what we're doing, you know?
The opposite's the case, it'd be a lot more private than showing, raising of hands.
Also, and the people that are taking the survey online are more technical people than, that obviously they embrace technology, so, I mean, there's a combination of, of that, but I, I guess my concern with the spring and fall, I mean, we typically do fall when we have to.
Right.
You know, unless we work on shortening the meetings, I, I feel like we have a hard enough time getting them once, I don't know why we would think we're gonna get them twice.
Well, zoning would be a tough one, most often, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, you might have a problem getting us there for that. Or some of us.
See, we see presentations were long, but I, I'm not sure that I recall them, they were the ones that were most contentious.
You know, I've heard feedback about, you know, limiting the numbers of fours and against type of idea, but, you know, the, the other part of that is, hey, it's your town meeting, right, it's, it's the citizens' town meeting, so, you know, it's a, it's a tough balance for the moderator to, hey, have we heard enough? Everybody want something to say? You got one shot at the apple, I know from a staff perspective, there's a lot of pressure on us to, to line up for one meeting, right, because we pretty much gotta project the future in January, you know, and I, in talking to other administrators across the Cape, you know, they, they know that they're in a traditional fall mode, and so if we miss an article here or there, they know they can grab it in the fall, but, you know, I mean, the end of the week, it's really up to the board and what they want to do, and we'll do, obviously, whatever you want to do, so...
Well, I think it's up to Dan, and I think Dan was going to put together the group that had looked at the electronic voting, to look at this information overall.
Yeah, I think certainly, you know, the moderator has to gauge, just based on what they see, in, that people lined up, as to, well, when do I say, if you have something new to add, come forward, you know, rather than get the redundancy, and the, you know, just the...
That's how Tom George did it, if you didn't have anything new to say, you know, that's it.
Well, yeah, and, and I think there's, you know, after, after a couple iterations of that, you get tired, and you don't want to hear anymore, you kind of tune people out, and I think that that's part of the process, we gotta, we gotta deal with.
But I do know Dan struggles with that, because, like, the idea is, he wants to make sure everybody has a, feel like they have a chance, you know, to say something, it's their time, you know?
Yeah, what are you looking for on this?
I'm just, this is for, you know, just, you know, if there's anything down the line, if you guys want to add to it, or think, you know, give us, like, you know, some feedback, whether it's individually, or as a group, you know, I, this is our recollection amongst the staff.
Can we just make sure that Dan gets this?
Yep, these are all things that, just being a participant in it, that we saw, could be streamlined and made better for the process in the future, so, is there anything you want to add?
Any comments from the board, anything to add?
Sure, anything, absolutely, yeah.
I, I just would say that I, I think you've hit almost everything.
Yeah.
You know, I think these are all the points, and I think it would be great to, in the future, be able to have this addressed, I think the, the open question's going to be date, right, Saturday, or weeknight, or spring and fall, I think that's something that might provoke a discussion at some other time, but I think that's what's sort of left to sort of address, right?
Yeah, yeah, I continue to hear input from people that, well, why'd you move it to Saturday? Yeah, this is not convenient, then, and, and I'm not sure that the chart reveals any evidence one way or the other, in terms of...
Did we get any preference on that at all, weekend, or on a Saturday? Did we get any preference on that at all? Weekend, or on a Saturday?
I think if we look at it, it talked about splitting it in two. There was more favorability, but it didn't say, I don't think, whether that would be a two-saturday event, or two, two, two nights, you know? So that's even-
So basically, on the question of whether or not to do it on a weeknight, as opposed to a Saturday, it's kind of a split vote. Thirty-eight percent support the idea of a town meeting on a Saturday, and then the idea of a weekday evening, thirty-five percent, and then there were twenty-six percent that's had no preference.
Twenty-six had either no preference and, uh, an unrelated preference, um, or it didn't fit into either of those two categories, when we condensed them just for simplicity's sake. So, one of those twenty-six percent perhaps could say, Saturday at five p.m. But just to provide you with a quick overview of the preliminary results, we consolidated those between the two major categories, which are Saturday and a weekday evening, or a week, this weekday.
In any of the complaints, did anybody suggest that it went way too long? I mean, I know we heard that, but, I mean, that was fairly pronounced. What if they knew that on a Saturday, it could be done maybe a little bit later, instead of like ten, ten to twelve? You know? I, I think honestly, if people knew that the meeting was going to move relatively quickly, you know? But, I mean, you can't predict that, unfortunately. And if there was food, but to me, what's telling is, is that there's no dominant answer on whether or not Saturday.
I think that Saturday is more, uh, convenient for our older population, for driving purposes in the dark and all that. And then, on the alternate, it's not as convenient for our younger populations, and vice versa.
I would say that, that would generally be my impression, too, except that when there's an override question, that doesn't hold true. The younger people do get out.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a nine to twelve on a Saturday as a trial for a couple of years, who knows? That doesn't seem to be a lot to give up, as opposed to burning a six-hour time block on a Saturday.
Well, I think the first thing we need to do is get it shorter. See if we can do pre, pre-information, pre-whatever we can do, have, have dialogue here. Maybe a month in advance, so it can play, so people can watch it, and they can come familiar with, with the, uh, topics, and have their questions answered, and perhaps we can go faster. I think we should try that.
I think more information in advance is, is, would be helpful in, in a number of different ways, uh, so that, uh, we can prep people, get them, uh, knowledgeable on the topics and, and move forward quickly. I think, something that stretches six hours, that's way, way too long, I think. You know, so, yeah, uh, about noon time, when you're getting hungry and tired, um, your patience really is stretched.
Okay. Good job, Dan.
Mr. Chairman, point of order. I heard the word attendance was many times, but was the actual number ever given?
Four hundred.
Okay. Um, there are no, no other comments at this point. Uh, we'll move forward. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the opening the 2019 town warrant. And I'm not sure what that discussion is all about at this point.
Well, we went back and forth with the former chairperson about this. So, we're officially putting the public on notice. Now's the time. From now till January, get, uh, your articles ready. If you've got something that you want to put forward, we'll take them in now. There isn't a procedure, there isn't anything in the charter that says you have to do that.
We usually open it closer, but he's just opening it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so it really doesn't, uh-
It stays open.
-detract from their ability to put together, uh-
Just tell them people, it's, if you wanted to get something together, now's the time to start thinking about it, you know? Yeah.
So, do we need an official vote on that?
No, just, it's an announcement.
Yes, we do. If we're going to open the war-
I think we have to have a, a motion to open it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Further discussion on that? Does that mean we're going to have more petitioned articles?
Hopefully not.
All right. Well, in that case, uh, seeing no further input, those in favor, please say it.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say. Okay. We'll open the warrant, then. All right, DY, uh, agreement draft. Um, Dan, you submitted this to legal counsel. Perhaps you should at least lead in on this.
Sure. So, uh, this represents, I think it would be fair to say, and Mike and Norm, help me if I'm off on this, but this appears to be what we believe to have been what we heard on our last set of meetings as it relates. Uh, I do know that Selectman Holcomb and Selectman, uh, Turner worked for many hours in this room to put together what they believed at that time capsulated all the areas that we seemed to have had some concurrency on. The last thing I just handed out to you is what is referred to as Exhibit A, which were the fixed cost document, uh, associated with what we believe at the last meeting that we had with Dennis, before everything kind of froze up, that we came, you know, even though our side had some additional add-ons, I believe it's fair to say that we believe that Dennis was offering up those as the fair fixed costs. And actually, I took Exhibit A and that one page from their document that they drafted up. Um, so, um, that's, represents, uh, town council's concern pretty much focused on, uh, issues related to the, uh, number of school committee meeting, uh, school committee members connected to, uh, population. They thought it was kind of a cumbersome, uh, way in which we put that in there, so we could further refine that. And also, because they weren't familiar with some of the backstory on a few topics, um, they weren't, uh, like the three-year trigger to come back and sit at the table. One thing I think we all recognized, was way too much time went on before opening up the dialogue here, because it was like a real cold start. So, we wanted to put a-
And finish.
Put a more, uh, more frequent sit-at-the-table situation, especially as the attendance figures changed dramatically. And I think the other one was the capital split, the sixty-forty. Uh, we had a lot of different strategies associated with that, but we, I think, believed that Dennis sixty-forty is pretty much the sweet spot. And I think Selectman Holcomb explained it perfectly at their last joint meeting. I think it was like twenty-three dollars to the average citizen's tax. But that's seven points what we're arguing about right now, right? So, that represents all of those points in, uh, I left, uh, the things for town council, like on the apportionment of the school committee members, um, available for discussion.
So, those changes, um, are in this document?
Well, he didn't really have any substantive changes. It was more something like, hey, why don't you think about that a little bit, you know?
All right.
Yeah, my, on, on the school representation, my understanding was, Norm, that you wanted to propose that it be based upon student enrollment, which could alter the composition of the representation in Dennis. And, um, that never really got agreed to. There was some discussion in, um, I remember the, the, um, I think their town administrators are one that brought it up, actually. She said, well, the school committee people don't represent just the families of the students. They represent the community generally, and therefore, um, the, um, representation should be based on the population of, of each town. But it never got solidified one way or the other. Is, is that your recollection?
Yeah. Actually, um, Mike, I think, um, I watched the last meeting, which occurred about a week ago, uh, of the Dennis Select Board and Finance Committee, and they had some, uh, discussion about this, uh, a particular section. They felt rather strongly, I think Cleon, uh, said that, uh, they, they do not want a provision inserted which would give Yarmouth a supermajority. They want, they want to maintain a position where there's more parity from their perspective. So, they want to have at least three of the seven representatives. Now, interestingly, if, if you just run those numbers, that would mean they have forty-two percent of the voting powder. And, you know, and I guess, you know, I've thought about that. Is that a negotiable point? I think it's negotiable. I, certainly.
Yeah, if they were paying forty-two percent of the cost, they'd have a point.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of, you know, if, if they're, they're willing to step up on, uh, you know, the, the cost issues, especially on capital, I mean, then, then certainly they'd, they'd earn those, the, uh, that type of representation. So, so I think that, then, I think we still have a negotiating point there-
I do, too.
-to move, uh, so.
Can, can you explain the cost on here, on the fixed cost here, the breakdown of the fifty-fifty split, why the school resource officers are there? Because we pay for them, they only pay for their benefits.
No, there's a chargeback that comes-
They pay.
Yeah.
We pay for their salary.
We charge them. We-
We bill them for the resource officers.
But they pay for the salary. We pay, they, well, they pay for, ultimately, it doesn't come out of the school budget.
Yeah, it does.
It does.
Yeah.
I was under the impression-
I'm sure it's built into the budget.
That the town of Yarmouth pays the salary.
Yeah. But we bill them, like, say, I want to, and Frank's not here to explain-
We bill them for their benefits.
We bill them about eighty thousand dollars per officer, I believe, is what it is. I think it was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, uh, for our two officers.
In fact, one of the points, one of the points Carol was making is, she said, you, I remember in the discussion, she said, you're billing us for the full cost of the officer, but he's not here fifty-two weeks a year. And they're talking about vacations and other-
I was under the impression-
Remember that?
-that the town, I've always been under the impression that the town paid the salaries and they paid the benefits.
No.
No, so, one of the touchpoints, that, well, I can't speak to that, but one of the touchpoints they had was, uh, that were addressing is the coverage, is to make sure, hell, hey, if we're paying for a hundred and eighty days, we want officers there a hundred and eighty days. So, the chief has, uh, come up with a strategy to rotate more officers in, because there, there could be vacation time, because those officers don't work the same schedule as the teachers necessarily, as, as it relates to their personal time. So, so we're working out some internal logistics associated with that, if we're going to give them an officer for a hundred and eighty days, that they get an officer for a hundred and eighty days. But we pay them.
So, so the split is reflected in here, uh, for Yarmouth and Dennis resource officers, then. Was that arrived at, uh, by some sort of negotiation in the past?
You know, I can't explain, uh, maybe Frank could shed some light on that.
Yeah, I would ask for further clarification on that, because I, I-
It's, it's, it's one officer in the case of Dennis?
One, yeah, and we provide two.
I think Dennis wanted to take their officer out of the, out of their portion of the budget, didn't he?
Yeah, I think that's the way that they wanted to just pull this off the table.
Wanted just to take them out, period.
That's correct. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. But I, my, my sense is that that's kind of faded into the background.
We never got back to the table with them.
No, that's true. That's true.
This, um, just, just by way of background, you may already know this, but this fixed cost sheet came about as a result of Rich B. and Vanu sitting down with Carol Woodbury and isolating out these expenses, which, at, up to a certain point, both sides agreed to, with our reserving, because we thought there were other, um, fixed costs that we wanted to consider in addition to these costs. Um, one, as I remember, was, and I think it was a point Eric brought up before, is utilities, you know, maybe, but, they, they didn't have any appetite for going forward, um, past this particular, um, document.
Yeah, property casualty insurance was another one. They didn't want to touch that one.
There's another one, yeah.
There's, you know, part of the issue is that, um, you know, uh, I've seen the draft of, of the potential wastewater agreement between the towns, and that has very similar concepts in it to what we proposed here. Uh, sharing of fixed costs on a basis that is different from the operating costs of, of the waste treatment plant. So, uh, and, and just to be a little bit more specific, um, what the wastewater agreement says is that operating costs would be shared based upon gallons actually used by each town.
Yeah.
Whereas, the fixed costs, and there's a substantial list, and it is, it's a lot of money, I think, in, in those cases. The fixed costs would be shared based on capacity designated for each town. And that could be significantly different at any point in time.
That's correct.
So, um-
Just for clarification, though, that document came from Mansfield, Norton, and Foxborough. We don't, we don't have anything-
No, but that's a, it's just kind of a framework.
It's a framework. That's correct. Yeah.
So, you know, the concepts are very similar, uh, in, in terms of facility use and, and so forth. So, you know, and going forward, I think that, that, oh, the, oh, the other significant thing is, in the, in the wastewater agreement, there's a pilot payment, uh, to the host town. And, um, you know, that's not addressed in, in the school agreement, uh, but, you know, certainly, it's, it's a point we've tried to make philosophically, that, hey, all we're trying to do is to, to, uh, have a, a fairer approach at this. We're not, we're not asking you for a pilot payment. We're asking you for fifty percent of the administrative costs.
Yeah. So, so to that point, these represented, it's fair to say, these represent what they believed would be the costs associated with, if they had their own district. We don't necessarily agree, but it was a talking point for us.
They don't agree with this either, according to the, the Board of Selectment meeting I watched.
Well, that, that came late in the game, right? But the other thing is, this is a three-year phase-in, too. So, it wasn't, even though they, at that time, agreed that those could likely be the carrying costs, we want three years to get it fully loaded, so.
I think initially, the, you know, I'll call it the Turner proposal, um, uh, contained the, uh, the sharing of, uh, fixed costs and the, uh, increased sharing on Dennis's part of the, uh, capital costs. And, um, he, he had left out a couple of other provisions. One was for mediation, which we felt strongly that we should have a mediation provision. And we also felt strongly that, uh, the, uh, total cost should be shared based on, or using the foundation enrollment, as opposed to the student population on October first. And that has, that, that involves a shift of costs over to Dennis, uh, to some degree. So, um, those concept, or all of those items are contained in, in this proposed agreement.
So, the question in front of the board, then, would be, is this something we can take a vote at some point in the very near future, or tonight, to move to the school committee for consideration, and then use that as the opportunity to get in front of the school board, explain our situation, and then wait to see what Dennis would put forward to the school board? This, uh, this has a provision in it, it should be noted, to amend the agreement, it adds the boards of selectmen from each respective town that the prior agreement did not have, which made it very difficult to amend it. Amendments needed to come from the school committee or initiative petition, a ten percent of the registered voters in the district. So, that makes it very difficult to change anything is, because if it didn't come from the school board, and it didn't come from the voters, then how do you change it, right? So-
And my recollection was that Dennis was in agreement with that change.
Correct. Absolutely. Yeah.
You know, if we, if we move forward to the, um, school committee first, then we're not really giving Dennis an opportunity for input. I mean, um-
I, I suppose you could take the tact that, that they can have a chance to move a document to the school committee, and then we can convene a meeting and see what happens, you know?
We could send this to them and give them a time, and ask them to meet, and perhaps we could put a time limit on it, and then perhaps we could advance one document to the school committee. If not, we may have to take a different-
Based on my experience, um, I think the only viable alternative for us, short of doing nothing, is to draft this agreement the way we feel it should be, and submit it directly to the school committee. Throughout the process, we were always the ones making the proposals. We were always showing up for our meetings. We were never canceling meetings. We were never taking internal votes. In fact, at the very first meeting, we agreed that we would discuss all of these items, and no votes would be taken on any item until we went through all of the items. And then, right within the agreement, within the meetings, if there was a, a contentious point, Dennis would, would conduct an internal vote, voting against a particular item. Or then we would get an email saying, well, we really can't do that, because we just had a vote, uh, and our finance committee voted this way. Or, and if you want more of the same, that's what you're going to get, I think, if you go back to them. I would get this agreement written as well as we can, that's satisfactory to us. Send it to the school committee. They'll get their input at that point, I think.
Oh, what do you think, Eric?
I agree with Mike one hundred percent. I mean, this has been going on for eight years, and Dennis has dragged their feet, or completely stopped communication at every opportunity they've had. Something needs to be done. And if we need to provoke it by sending this directly to the school committee, I'm in favor of that, because Dennis won't do anything unless their, unless their feet are held to the fire.
I agree with that, too.
It's to their benefit not to do anything. Why would they?
No, I agree with that, too. But I, I, I do think in terms of perception, we should give them the first opportunity with a timeline, and, and let them know, send them our document. Here's our document. If you would like to meet within, you know, give us a date, we'll convene, and we can have a discussion. Otherwise, it will be submitted to the school committee. I think it's the proper thing to do as a partner. Whether or not they do the right thing is another thing.
So, another, another few weeks is not going to make a difference one way or the other, I wouldn't think, in that respect. You know, we don't have a timeline, and that we have to meet-
We've been criticized by saying we've been shut out, they've been shut out of the discussions at this point, which is, which is completely wrong and not accurate.
Yeah, they also said-
Oh, they canceled the discussions. They canceled.
Actually, they said, in this last meeting, they said, the Yarmouth Select Board had hijacked the, uh, the agreement and, and eliminated the negotiating team from, from any discussion of it. But I thought, gee, I'd, that way.
That's not accurate, and- That's not accurate, and that's not, we've tried to work with them all along, but I agree with what Eric said, if they, if given the opportunity, they'll do nothing. And why would they? So I think that we need to, personally, I think we need to move forward, we need to keep moving forward and put it to the people, but I do think that we should give them the opportunity...
The time's certain.
...in a short period of time, if they don't want to do it, then fine.
You're getting nothing but obstructionism, in my opinion.
Well, what kind of a timeframe might we consider? Is it two or three weeks, is that...
I'd say, you know, to be, I don't like to use...
Reasonable, yeah.
Yeah, reasonable's a good word, probably 30 days is fair enough to get a board together.
I don't think we have 30 days. We have a Matiche's project that's looming, and it's not our fault that we're in the situation that we're in, but we made it very clear, you could look at the record from a year ago, that this needed to be addressed. And we don't have 30 days, but I think we should give them some amount of time.
30 minutes.
You know, and that's a good point. You know, in my mind, whether or not the Matiche's building goes forward is entirely dependent upon whether or not Dennis goes along with us.
I agree.
I agree, too, but they...
I agree.
And if they don't want to entertain it, then no new building. That's why we control the process of how the vote for the new building goes, not the school committee. Because if Dennis doesn't want a deal, we just don't do it. They missed their deadline for funding, and it's dead, they can reapply. And this time, we will make sure, because we got duped last time, we will make sure that we're going to fund a Yarmouth building, not a Dennis and Yarmouth building.
I tend to feel like a month seems too long to me. Two weeks seems a little bit brief.
21 days.
Just cut it in between, 21 days, three weeks? Does that make sense, a letter to them, to that effect?
We can't call a meeting, I mean, I think two weeks, two weeks is adequate amount of time. Doesn't mean we have to have a meeting in two weeks, but we want, at least, I would like...
An arrangement?
A date and their acceptance to meet and discuss this, and within...
As a full board?
As a full board.
So, and what comes from that? So they say, okay, we want time to go make our revisions, give us two weeks. That two weeks turns into four weeks. Then after four weeks, they say, okay, let's get together in another two weeks and talk about it some more. And then we go back and forth, it needs to stop.
We started this process in August.
And we started this in 2010.
Oh, I know, I know.
Well, let's say that, and follow your scenario, because I think it's a good point, that we're exasperated with the process and with their foot dragging. So suppose we say, all right, we'll give you two weeks to come back to us with a discussion. We're, at the end of that period, we're going to submit the proposal to the school committee, subject to potential revisions. However, we are asking them to take action on it in accordance with their schedule. Is that, would that meet that need at that point? So that we ultimately would be in a position of saying, okay, that agreement is the agreement that is moving forward because Dennis has not come forward, or Dennis has come forward and here's some revisions.
Well, I think if you're asking for them for to have some revisions over a certain period of time, and they actually have some, then we sit back at the table again, and we start this ball, to Sluckman Tully's point, the ball starts all over again.
I know.
I mean, I have mixed feelings on this, but I do think we went through a very diligent process to get to where we are today, and it froze up, no fault of anybody on our side, none.
Well, maybe we submit it to them and submit it to the school committee at the same time, and say, here's the document that we support, and we ask that you approve it and join us in...
I don't think the school committee, once they get this, is gonna set up some kind of a forum for get input from probably both sides. I would think they would.
Well, perhaps that's the avenue we should take.
I mean, that's what I'd do if I was on the school committee, I'd want to hear...
Ask the school committee to...
Well, that was the plan, I was gonna ask, you know, we were gonna take a vote tonight to move it to the school committee. At the same time, I can draft a letter to the Board of Selectmen in Dennis to say that this document has taken, the Board of Selectmen in Yarmouth has taken a vote to advance this document attached to the school committee. This is your courtesy copy, and then we could take it up with the school committee at that time.
So the school, so the school committee then could, if they wanted, bring the two boards together?
That's correct, they could ask for a meeting.
Tracy?
So moved, what he just said.
All right.
Do you have a second on that? Okay. Any further discussion?
You know, I think we have to be careful, because I think that the way we felt about this and how strongly we feel about the fairness of where we come, to have it opened up and start it all over again is not our intention at this point.
But I think that's what's gonna happen.
That could be what happened, but I think that that's why we need to be clear with our intention. It's not that we're not amenable to listen, but the work that has been done...
Right.
It's unbelievable, the time that's gone into this, and not just from Norman and I, but from our town staff.
Absolutely.
Chris and Dan and Rich.
So I'm not interested in starting over. I'm not interested, I think that this is a take it or leave it document for the most part, in terms of the costs that were agreed upon, and what we've come up with with capital, specifically.
I think the representation on the school committee is probably the negotiable item on that, but that comes at a play with...
No, I'm supporting your position on that, I'm just saying, I didn't think it ever got resolved, but I see some value to that approach.
That is, yes, but in terms of where we are with capital, I think we've been more than fair, this board's discussed it at length, in terms of, you know, what we could ask for, and what we have asked for. I don't want a whole renegotiation again.
And capital...
So I don't know how your wording is gonna be when you submit this, but this is the document that we support.
Capital's only seven points, based on where we are today.
That's exactly it.
That's all it is.
Yep, seven points, that's it.
Yeah.
It's a very little amount of dollars, absolutely.
That's right, that's right, so. All right, if there's no further discussion, those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, we move forward. Great, thanks. Dan, so you'll draft a letter and...
Yeah, I'll correspond with you, make sure you sign off on that.
Big time. Drive-in site utilization committee, Jim, welcome.
We ahead of schedule?
We are ahead of schedule, we have 20 minutes.
We want to, it's not really a formal hearing, is it?
No, so I'll just set up, so the drive-in site committee chaired by Mr. Saban was tasked by the board, I believe it was like last March, to use a six-month period to come up with some proposed potential reuse of the drive-in site. They have been working very diligently towards that end with their team, and they want to share that end product today. I don't necessarily think today's an end, would I be correct? This is more, gives you some food for thought, and they've got some good information for us, and we can build from here.
Good evening, I think you all have everything in your packet that's represented. Any questions?
Yeah.
Seeing none? Good evening.
Very good, Jim.
I have two packets.
So...
One is my memo, one is the PowerPoint.
This should be a memo, a very big memo.
Don't relate to the presentation?
If they do, there's some overlap, I think the memo is legible, and the PowerPoint is...
So let me start by officially introducing myself, I'm Jim Saban, I'm the chair of the drive-in site utilization committee. With me this evening, I'm just gonna read from my list rather than keep turning around to tell you who's behind me. Members at large are Peter Slovak, Rich Bilskey, and David Reed. Committee representative members, Tom Roach is the vice chairman of the, and a member of the planning board, Jack McCormick, who's probably out back.
He's right there.
He's right here.
Hi, Jack.
I'm here.
We all know who Jack is, community economic development committee. Alternate members are Bud Nugent and Dave Helberg. I also want to make note, actually, I was supposed to be changing these slides, sorry about that. And I also make note that Bob Churchill and Jerry Manning were also previous members of the board who have stepped down for various reasons. Also, as participants have been staff, department heads, employees throughout the community. Karen and Kathy have been great help through our planning department, Kelly in conservation, our natural resources department, pretty much every department head has participated in this and given us some feedback in one way or another. So a little bit of history, I just thought these were kind of interesting slides to put up. If you look at the left, that's an aerial view of the drive-in site in the Parkers River estuary, 1947, so about 70 years ago, actually 71 years ago. The middle slide, 1958, you can see the drive-in has now been created. To the right side, none of Gateway Isles has been created, that's all marshland. And now if you look at it in 2017, the drive-in site is no longer utilized as a drive-in site, and the marshland all along the east side of the river has now been fully developed with single-family dwellings and hotels, et cetera. So just kind of an interesting perspective of what's gone on in that area over the last 70 years. So the drive-in site itself is about 22 acres, and it was purchased in 1985 at town meeting. And as we all know, there have been a number of discussions about what to do with this property. There was a discussion at great length in a number of years, kind of like the school issue, we talked about the marinas, and whether we could have a marina there. In 2013, fiscal analysis showed a marina was no longer financially viable. So that put us forward to where we're at. Now, let me interrupt it, I've also heard recently that some members of the board wish to still pursue a marina, and I would suggest to you at this time, as my editorial comment, that that's certainly something the board could accept to do and put an RFP out and see if that is something that works for you. Our committee doesn't recommend that, and they'll go into more detail as to why here as we go forward. So in 2015, the Board of Selectmen put together the original, you know, committee that basically said, what are we gonna do with this property? With our original trial charge to identify policy priorities, identify potential uses, and identify relative benefits of various ownerships. It was a six-month process that we went through, and we came back to you with some general conclusions, and asked for some additional, some funding to move forward. We had looked at a phased process in which we recommended two phases. So at phase one was to investigate the river park and the boardwalk, and to look at interim uses of the remainder of the site, and I think this has a little, this was the remainder of the site, which pretty much is what is referred to as the drive-in proper. This would be the river walk park area, and then off to the way would be the drive-in site. And the second phase to be determined. So we went to town meeting, we asked for $84,000, in which the townspeople unanimously agreed to, and you gave us a charge to, as a, to put together a feasibility and concept design to study, to look at first phase. So we went out to bid, and we were fortunate to bring on to our team Beta Consulting Group, of which Kelly Carr, Joe Freeman, and Blake Peters are also here with us this evening as our experts, and will be available to answer any questions that you may have for them. So then we came back to you again, now it's now March of 2017, we received a revised charge from you that asked us to look at a number of additional issues, oversight of feasibility and conceptual design study, to review of interim uses for remaining land, outreach efforts to solicit public feedback, and to report back to you with our ultimate decisions. It was a 12-month process, and about six months, we came, six months ago, we came to you and gave you a preliminary report as to where we were, and promised to come back to you in March, but as you can see, it's now May, but here we are. So, the scope of our work was to look at the, redefine the wetland delineation of the site, every three years you want to do that, alternative designs for a river park, boardwalk, and a boardwalk, to participate in some public outreach participation. We did a number of meetings, we did a survey online, we've had hearings to get input from the community, we talked to a number of stakeholders as well, in developing that, we created a concept plan and development, we looked at the permitting analysis, cost estimates, and then we also looked at a definitive subdivision, which was to be determined, now again, that was that Lot 2, which is the drive-in site itself. So, as a result of this, there were about 12 meetings, 12 months, 17 meetings, three site visits to the property, we had lots of public input, as I said, and received lots of input, both pro and con, and took that into consideration in our considerations. So as a result, the committee has five recommendations, of which we're gonna go through. Number one, we determined that it is important to retain the drive-in property for recreation uses and not dispose of it for any purpose, other purpose. We believe that the vote at 1985 town meeting was a sound decision, and that the town should continue to support that decision through the recommendations that we're going to give you this evening. So, and I have to apologize, because I have some allergy issues, so if I'm missing something, I want to jump into myself and tell you, Kathy and Karen, please jump in if I'm missing something. So, the process was to obviously retain the drive-in site, establish a permanent use for festival and special events on the former drive-in area, to move forward on a river park and the drive-in site's preferred concept plans, in which we're going to go into in a few minutes here, move forward with some form of a boardwalk, which is central to the success of the project. It's kind of a build it and they will come mentality, that we believe that this is really a big draw to this whole project. And the last is to permit design the river park and boardwalk together, and proceed with constructions as funding and resources permit. We recognize that funding is a big issue to any project that we bring forward in town, so we have some recommendations as to how we might be able to move forward with some of this. So again, recommendation, recommendation number one is, again, to retain the entire property. It was purchased in 1985 for recreational uses, we agree with that, recommend to retain the original intent of this taking and not to dispose of any portion. So I'm gonna skip through some of this, because I've just told you all of this. Use the entire site for recreation, negates the need to subdivide the property, and opens up a wider range of funding opportunities, so if we just use this as, well, one big property. Recommendation two is to, one of the things we looked at in the beginning was interim uses, and we believe that recommendation number two is not to have an interim use of the drive-in area, but to make that a more permanent use for festivals and events. We were fortunate to have the Irish Festival here this last fall, or spring, rather, and we believe that concerts, craft fairs, other events like that could be a beneficial use to the site. We originally viewed this as, again, as an interim use, but think that this is a more permanent use that we could move forward with. Again, this is what we looked at with the short term. You can see, I'm gonna try with my little arrow here, this is the drive-in site, you can notice these are the humps that were there when you drive your car up, so you get the right angle to see the screen. This is where we have plans for the river walk area, and so there's some short-term improvements, there's some green space, some parking areas, some, bringing in some electrical upgrades, and water, Wi-Fi, these are things that have been recommended to us through some of the people that we've talked to who did the Irish Festival and other events that would be considered for the area. And the next step to this would be to put conceptual plans together, get some cost estimates, and some funding. The third recommendation is to continue to move forward with the river walk park, an inclusive process, develop the preferred concept plan. We looked at three sketches, and I'm gonna go over a little bit of this as well, as we turn some page here. Again, many public meetings, feedback from the neighborhood on, and recommendations from the general public about things such as like lighting, and security, and trash disposal. We took all of that into consideration. I want you to clearly understand that the committee went to great lengths to consider everything that could be considered, and listened to the concerns of the people that had concerns, and tried to find answers to them. So again, our committee looked at three plans, these are the three different options, and you can see they have different parking ways. After our discussions and consulting, we revised that to come to, this is our preferred concept that we presented to Beta, and then they would then take that information and put together the cost estimates and discuss some of the issues that we had presented to them. You'll notice that we have here a potential wastewater pumping station that we've considered, this is the upweller. This is the upweller. And again, this is stuff that I know most of you have heard in our previous presentations, and if you want to ask me any questions along the way, please interrupt me. This was where our proposal for a kayak launching area is, this is a turnabout area. So, we've looked at a number of different items to go along with this park to add, so in consideration of things such as parking. You know, we even looked at what type of parking should we use, what types of materials should we have? One of the recommendations from Pat Armstrong was to put humps in the parking area so that they would slow the speed through the parking areas. The neighborhood members suggested crosswalks over Route 28 due to the proximity to the Witter and Captain Parker's and Ice Cream, et cetera, on the other side of the street. So, we considered that. We looked at our trailways and what the walk-in condition should be. We looked at our bathroom facilities, and some of these look very familiar to you. Obviously, Dennis Pond on the right in the bottom, Bass Hall on the left. One of the things we recommend is because the kayak launching area is farther down than from the main area is to have porta-johns in the summer months and having more permanent bathroom facilities closer towards the road area. And then when the summer months are gone, you just take the porta-potty back out. So, those are the types of things we looked at. Again, trash, we'd heard a lot of concern about trash. We looked at the types of disposers, and the Big Belly solar trash and recycle bin was the trash bin of choice. We looked at gates to make sure that we have security. We considered lighting. We also looked at signage. So, we've looked at a number of things. This is an interesting thing, so some natural landscaping and some designs that came forward. But I want you to note that this is some of the... These photos were taken on the site itself. So, as you can see, there's already some natural beauty there that we can incorporate into our plan. We took a look at types of shading, and again, this is to demonstrate to you the detail that the committee went through to try to get to some estimates. We looked at what types of events and activities could be used, and this is really what the intent of the 1985 town meeting was all about, was concerts in the park, you know, events that you could have there on a regular basis. We looked at seating. We considered lunch trucks, looking at natural growth, different type of landscaping and type of playscapes where we could use natural stuff rather than spend money on large industrialized play equipment. We could use other types of materials. We have a kayak launching area, and some of the benefits of the kayak launching area is that there'll be some signage there to instruct people about the safety about using kayaks in the river, which isn't there today. There's an opportunity for some funding to lease these kayak ramps that you have here or trailer storage. We could lease to a vendor to run a kayak storage out of that area as well. I think one of the exciting parts of this whole project is that it gives us an opportunity to use this park for educational purposes, through signage, through interpretive signage throughout the area, showcasing the natural beauty of the marsh area, the riverfront, our upweller. You know, we're talking a lot about the blue economy, and we could tie the upweller and the displays of the marine life in that area to the blue economy. They have a blue trail, I think they're talking about. So, being able to tie this type of stuff into the project would be very beneficial, and these are just some examples of interpretive signage. And again, like I said, educational opportunities. There's a great number of opportunities that we'd have to bring the youth of our community there to demonstrate to them what a marsh looks like and the natural resources that are there and give them a great opportunity to see what goes on. Also gives us an opportunity to use the area to promote the arts. It's been my experience that culture and arts are huge economic stimulators. Using the venue for artist shanties, for public art, or some of the other areas that we could utilize the site for. Again, trying to find ways to draw people to this area because the benefit of the area is to bring people there to then leave and go out to our community and spend money in our restaurants and towns and stay in our hotels and support our local community. So, when we did all that, as you can see, the walk itself, our cost estimates have a range of about $4.8 million. That is like the Taj Mahal of parks. We really looked at everything. But we recognize that you don't have to do $4.8 million to have a beautiful park there. There's ways to do a lot of this that you can do incrementally and still get to the final goal of achieving a beautiful park and river walk area. But these, again, the costs based upon the great detail that the committee went through to give to Beta to work with to price the park area out. How am I doing, ladies? Have I missed anything yet? Okay. Because I forgot to turn my pages, so I got to catch up here. So, as a result of that, in getting that funding is a concern. We looked at a number of different ways to fund a project such as this. CPA money, obviously, is a source for matching funds. There's our large tourism preservation funds. As you can see by the list here, there's a great number of opportunities that we would have to pursue funding for this type of park and river walk area. And these are areas that what we would recommend you do is to... Recommend to move forward, we'd look into some of these funding sources. And of course, to build it, you, more than anything, want to know what it's going to cost to maintain it. So, as part of our project, we reached out to department heads and town employees to get a feel for the types of costs that are to utilize these types of properties. And it is estimated if we were to create the river walk park to maintain it, it'd be about $31,000 annually. Those costs can be covered by a number of different ways, by utilizing a fee for event usage, a fee for the kayak launch area, possibly even parking fees for a meadow parking or something like that. So, there are ways to offset the fees for your maintenance through utilization of the park itself. And our recommendation four is to move forward with some vision on the boardwalk and configuration to be determined. This was an area that I think we all understand has been a great deal of discussion. The board, the committee took great lengths to listen to the concerns of the public, to try to find ways to address all of their concerns. As I said, we'd even done some site visits to get a visual. You know, some individuals in the Gateway Isles neighborhood had expressed that, frankly, their concern was, you know, the visual of what it would look like to have a boardwalk. So, Beta had gone to the opposite side and done some... And I think they're in the back of the room, and I think in your packets as well, some illustrations of what the boardwalks would actually look like. But again, we believe that the boardwalk... The vote was unanimous amongst the committee that a boardwalk was an essential element. We disagreed on the length of the boardwalk itself, and I'll go through a little of this as well. So, again, you've seen this before. This was the three options that were originally presented to us. This was option one, which has a loop and a spur at the north side, and this being the drive-in up here, and this being Seagull Beach, and another spur here, and no connection in between. Option two was to, again, have the loop and run the entire boardwalk all the way over to Seagull Beach. And this was closer to the river. Option three is more centrally located, right down the middle of the marsh area. When we first created this and we went out and started looking at things, some of the things I want to point out is that to demonstrate our concerns for the environment, right here is an osprey nest. And our original layout had this boardwalk much closer to the osprey nest. And through consulting with Natural Resources, it was recommended to us to shift this boardwalk further to the west to get it away from that osprey nest. So, that's one of the considerations that we had taken into in the layout of this. So, as a result of looking at all of this, we recognized the need for the boardwalk as being a part of it. And again, these are the visuals. This is Gateway Isles over here. So, from this vantage point is when you look at those pictures, again, that are back on the back walls, it's probably easier to see. And if you're watching on TV, they're over here in the corner. I'm not sure how well you can see them. But again, to give you the idea of what it would look like visually. So, the committee split in its recommendations with regards to the boardwalk itself. Two members recommend... Unanimously, we all agreed to this loop. Oops. Okay, get your fingers ready, Jim. So, we agreed to the loop section. We all agreed that this is a good part to tie in to the boardwalk area. This would be one type of walkway, and then it would go to a boardwalk type here because we believe that would be a good part. Now, three of us believe that we should consider the development of the entire boardwalk known as option two. And again, there's some additional information that would be need to be found out with regards to borings and how deep this would be. But it's our belief that we should look at what the total cost is, and if we want to reduce it after that information, then we can go back to our other option, which for some reason is not coming up. So, I think the other option was no spur at all, was two members, and I'm going to look for my members. Is that correct? Two members, no spur?
One C.
Which would be in your packet as one C. And again, these are things that you're going to have to wrestle with. It's our job to bring you the information, and up to you guys to kind of figure out where to go from here. But again, with the boardwalk, we did the same thing that we did with the park. We went to great lengths to consider the types of materials that we used, the visuals, how wide it would be. For example, this is the Bass River boardwalk, Bass Hall boardwalk. That boardwalk is too narrow. We've all walked it, and if you're walking with your significant other, you've got to stop and get behind one another because you can't cross it. So, our recommendation is the boardwalk over there is to make six feet, which is make it wider so that people can walk back and forth. So, again, the details that we've gone through. We looked at the materials that should be used and listened to the recommendations and the experts as to what the best materials to consider. Looked at the angle of the railings, the types of boards and planking that would be used, the bump outs that will be along the boardwalk. And again, these are opportunities at these bump outs. You could have signage to, again, demonstrate what's going on in the marsh area. As you can see, this is what some of them typically would look like up here in the corner. So, again, great lengths to look at all these different options. We went back to Beta and said, "Okay, this is what we want." They did the costing out, and as you can see, they did it in a couple of different ways. This is option one, 1B, 1C, option two, and option C. But they also did it with the different types of woods. This only presents hardwood, which was our final recommendation, but they presented us two options with the types of materials to use. And as you can see, the pricing on these boardwalks ranged from about $1.9 to $2.5 million. We believe this is a worthy investment. Let me get to my notes ahead of myself. I'm glad to see nobody's interrupted me so we can get out of here before 10 o'clock. That's very good. So, again, potential funding sources of the boardwalk are pretty much similar to the river walk. There's a number of opportunities available for funding that we would ask to pursue. And again, we recommend that some of this be done based upon the availability of funding. And again, maintenance is another issue. So, we looked at the maintenance costs of a boardwalk, and depending upon the type of boardwalk you would suggest and recommend, it's going to depend upon the estimated costs. We looked at an average cost of about $5 per foot. So, recommendation five is to move forward with the... Did I skip a page here? Okay. Design and permit together both the river walk and the boardwalk as one project. We believe that the best opportunity for funding as a whole, and we recognize that there are a number of permitting processes that need to go through. You know, the drive-in property itself appears already disturbed, but for example, boardwalks are permissible use provided that they were developed and designed in a protective way to protect the natural resources, which we would certainly advocate for. We wouldn't want to build a boardwalk that we thought would destroy our natural resource. And there's some key permitting process that would have to be undertaken through Mass Environmental, working with not only Kathy and Karen, but with Kelly and Carl and the rest of the qualified staff in Town Hall. They would work through the permitting process to be able to move forward with these things. So, to review. Retain the entire drive-in property as for recreational use. In other words, stick with the plan. In 1985, we had an idea. We should stick with it. Establish a permanent use for the festivals and special events for the former drive-in site, and that is to start moving forward with preparing that site to be utilized, some grading, some bringing some water in, some Wi-Fi, some electricity. Let's get it up and using as quickly as it can. It's probably the least heavy lifting of the entire project. And after 30-something years, it's probably not a bad idea to start using it. While we're doing that, simultaneously move forward with a river walk park, assuming that this is something that the Board of Selectmen would agree to and support. We'd move forward with some borings. Now, again, we talked about the boardwalk, and if we are going to expend the boardwalk across the marsh, one of the questions we have is the depth of the peat. So, to be able to determine the cost to do that all the way across, we'd need to incur additional expense to have some borings of the peat so that we don't find that we've undertaken a project that the peat is 200 feet deep. It's probably not, but... Our hand borings have been done around the loop, have been partially done, have indicated to us the soils are okay for about 15 feet. So, our cost estimates are better that way. And again, why some of us think go for the whole thing is we're going to at least get the answers as to what it would cost to do it, and then we can decide we want to move forward or not with it. But I think the more information we have as a community, the better we are able to make educated decisions. Again, so move forward. The permit design process, work together and proceed with construction funding as resources permit. When we find the money to do it, then we move forward. Some next steps. Finalize design and implement short-term uses for the improvements, which I just talked about, bringing the water in and getting it graded in some conceptual design areas. The Board of Selectmen would have to decide whether you want option two or 1C, which way you'd want us to move forward. And once you decide on the boardwalk decision, move forward obtaining funding and design permitting and updating costs for the river walk and boardwalk option that you choose. And again, you can choose option three if you want, but we're recommending either one or 1C. Our job is to present the facts to you, and it's your job to then take all this information to decide what you think is best. And we've given you a lot of stuff to consider. We understand that. We believe this is an opportunity to take that section of Route 28 and turn it around. It gives us an opportunity to present a focal point for economic redevelopment. It has a great potential for festivals and other events on a year-round basis. So, if we build the boardwalk, people will most likely go out there just like our other boardwalk on a year-round basis. So, that's the bottom line. If I've missed anything, I'll look to committee members or our experts, who are all sitting quietly. So, questions?
Well, first of all, before we open it up for questions, I think all of you deserve a great thank you from all of us, the rest of the town, for the work that you've done. It's been a long process, sometimes contentious, and I think you've been able to manage that and I think pull together, synthesize a lot of different ideas and come up with a proposal that is very attractive. So, thank you, one and all, for all the work that you've done on this.
Thank you.
Questions from the board at this point?
I have one question. What triggers a DRI in this particular project? I saw in permitting, it listed that as a...
Tracy, I could answer that, but I'm going to go to the experts.
It's the MEPA review.
MEPA review.
Oh, it said Cape Truck Commission in here.
But I think what they're saying is that if there's a MEPA review of the project, that's a threshold that triggers the DRI.
That's what I was wondering.
As soon as you have to do an environmental notification form through MEPA, it automatically...
It automatically goes to them, right.
Make sure you add that to your cost.
When we said... First of all, you know, that was a great presentation. So, thank you for all of your hard work. You know, had you not given that presentation, I probably wouldn't feel as warm and fuzzy about it as I do. But I have gone from not at all warm and fuzzy to moderately warm and fuzzy. I can envision it being a very nice place to be. You know, I wrestle with these things because it's a $10 million project, all in. You know, and I... You know, and I don't disagree with spending taxpayer dollars on amenities for taxpayers, dog parks, pickleball courts, things of that nature. But, you know, I don't know what this is going to be for our residents. I don't know that I am ever going to drive there and spend time. Maybe I'll go once at the end and see how it came out. And I think it's a great spot for tourists who want to walk the marsh and go to the beach and come back and have lunch at Captain Parker's. But I don't know what it is from December to May. It's --
I would first suggest that you are no different than anybody else who lives in any other community. I once asked a guy who grew up in Philadelphia to show me the Liberty Bell, and he said he'd never seen it. So I understand that, but I think if we look at some of our other parks and our boardwalks that we have in the community, they do get a great deal of community use. You know, people walk the boardwalk just to watch the sunset and then go home. I think when I lived over by the Bass Hole Boardwalk, I would see many people on a regular basis. I saw some people whose pictures were like, okay, such-and-such is at the boardwalk. It was a regular thing. So people within the community do find enjoyment in these types of facilities. And it's again a quality of life issue. With regards to your comment about the $10 million, keep in mind, that's the Maserati, the Cadillac, the Rolls-Royce. There's ways that we can develop this project in a fiscally responsible way, which is what I obviously advocate for. I'm a taxpayer of town as well. And I think by finding the right grants and funding, we can move forward in a way that we can achieve the ultimate goal of having really a center of town that we can all go to on a regular basis, Eric.
No, I agree with you 100%. And, you know, I don't know what the expected outcome of this here tonight is, but I would like some more time to look at the options. You know, I couldn't see it very well here. I can't see it very well up there. Was the presentation emailed to us? Was that in the, in our packet email last Friday? Okay. We get emails and these bursts of 15 or 20, and I just, I pass out after about four. Okay, so what is the anticipated outcome of this, Dan? Or you people?
Well, I think for us, it's more a sense of, you know, the next step would be to start working on the site preparation as it relates to be able to do Part One, which is to get it in position so that an Irish festival or music festival can be done safely with some minor amenities there. So we need to develop a cost estimation for what that looks like, what are the steps involved, and then look for the money to be able to do that. Some of it could be done in-house, and we've been working on elements to it, and then we'll get that presentation to you. But it was more a matter of, do you like what you saw? Because I, to the point about the cost, we could certainly, this I think lends itself well to phasing these grant opportunities. Sometimes you've got to go through one, two, three, four cycles. But certainly, to get us in position to do some of the things that we already know there's some interest in, we should probably look to get something in front of you financially as it relates to what that is sooner rather than later.
Now, that kind of triggers a distant memory of the original. Wasn't the original charge of this to determine or to find a use for, a permanent use for a portion of the site and a not-permanent use for the other portion?
Right, that was the interim use section. But through our process, we have come to the conclusion that the interim use would be better served as a permanent use for festivals, et cetera, rather than trying to subdivide that piece off and then temporarily find a different use for it. There are some restrictions to the property due to the way it was purchased in 1985 that really requires us to, doesn't require us. We can go through legislative process to remove the restriction, but it's rather lengthy and quite frankly, I think it needs two-thirds voted in the legislature to get it done. But we, again, recommend as a committee that we stick with the original plan to keep it as one recreation site and meld it all back together so that through funding, we can utilize it as a whole site versus breaking parts up. David did want to have an opportunity to make a comment, and so if I can ask you to indulge David Reed, who's a member of the committee.
Thank you, Jim, members of the board, David Reed. Just a response to maybe Eric's comments and some thoughts that you may have at this stage. I walk on the boardwalk at the Bass Hole. I went to the Irish Festival this spring, back in the '80s and '90s when this place was used for circuses and family festivals. I took my children there, and I look forward to the opportunity to do that for all the things that we look forward to for this site now. The committee very specifically and very intently tried to design a package that was not a tourist destination, but that was a year-round destination for residents as well as tourists. We envisioned this to be not just a two- or three-month-a-year place where people are going to stop and go out in their kayaks. We envisioned this to be a place where we're all going to have a chance to do something there that we will enjoy and benefit from, and that businesses in the area will benefit from. The other point I wanted to make is that while it's been over 30 years that we've been sitting around, I don't mean that in a derogatory sense, but we've been talking about what to do with this for over 30 years. It's bought and paid for. We need to do something with it. But, that said, please understand that this report from the committee is not just a make-work report. We have not just come up with something to do with this property. This is a package of phases, of areas of development, that the committee feels is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the town of Yarmouth. How many times have we heard reports from our consultants, from our planners, that have said, "Yarmouth lacks an identity. We lack a town center. We lack a reason for people to stop in Yarmouth when they're passing through. And we lack the facilities to keep people here once they're already here." We see this as a 20-plus acre site right smack in the middle of town on Route 28, that we have pretty much a blank slate to do something with. And we think that this is a combination of opportunities in this report that will give us a chance to do something special with that piece of property for the entire town and for the future of the entire town. So the committee is not just trying to fulfill its charge from you to find something to do with it. This is a package that this committee is enthusiastic about, that this is an excellent opportunity, and we highly encourage the town to do some or all of these steps as soon as we can. And we hope that you'll digest it, think about it, come back another night, talk about the different phases, have the town staff look at the various funding options, and apparently there are quite a few for recreation and tourist-type activities, more than for some other activities. Let's put together as much information as we can and go forward with a project like this or some combination of this that you and the town people agree with. And do it now while we've got a chance, while we've got a piece of property there we can do something with. Just my thoughts.
I want to thank, I would like to thank all of you. It's been a long process, and I appreciate the deliverables that we have. It's a lot that we're going to have to think about. You said that the committee, in terms of the River Walk and the temporary use, was unanimous in their support for that piece. So it's basically the boardwalk that has some differing opinions, but the general concept of the direction for the general use of the property is, has been unanimously supported.
Correct. The boardwalk itself is unanimous. It's how you design that. Do you put the boardwalk across the marsh, or you just make the loop? But we all agree unanimously that the interim use should be a permanent use and combined as part of the River Walk and the boardwalk, so all as one package versus individually.
Mr. Chairman, I have some comments as well in regards to the overall project. When we first started the meeting --
Not everybody knows who you are.
Oh, Tom Roach, I serve as vice chair. You don't. I was very interested in looking at tax revenue for the town and looking at a marina. And we all know what happened to the first exercise with the marina. What I wasn't aware of was the fact that the original marina took the entire site. My proposal was going to be to look at a marina and then also give the developer the opportunity of having a mixed-use concept along with the marina to subordinate some of the expense. For example, maybe the possibility of condos, residential housing, top-of-shop housing, retail first floor, commercial second floor, whatever the mix would be to make it more palatable for the developer to go in and look at the whole site. As we went through the process, matter of fact, I think it was a couple of meetings ago, looking at the original marina plan, I thought there was a series of commercial buildings that were on the western side of the 22 acres, but it wasn't. It was buffers, it was a tree line, and so forth. So in essence, what I felt the project should entail wasn't feasible. And from that point, I went back to the River Walk in regards to that particular area. And I think that if you look at the River Walk, the end of the River Walk heading south, and then you look at the Option One C, that was what I voted for. And it's a, it's a lookout with a semicircle with no spurs. And I think that it was, it would be a tremendous undertaking for the town, but also looking at the cost factor for the River Walk and even that section, One C for the boardwalk. So that's, I just want to be clear in regards to some of the different votes that we had on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I too want to say thank you and very much appreciate all the work that you've all put into this. I just have some questions about some of the uses that were talked about or discussed sort of during the planning process. I know we had the Urban Land Institute here doing a fairly ambitious sort of visioning on the Route 28 corridor and some other things in town. And there was some mention possibly of a bike path connection to the site. Did that get anywhere? Did that get any traction, or is that sort of thrown out the window?
We didn't necessarily go there.
Yeah.
But we all agree that it's, again, another part of the opportunity that is presented to us by developing this site. There have been some conceptual, based upon those discussions of the bike path internally and from citizens as a whole, who have actually shown us how we could build a bike path through the woods and, you know, through the conservation areas by the ponds and come right out to, and have the drive-in site be a starting point, if you will, for bicyclists, to be able to get and go up and connect to the bike path and go all the way up to Wellfleet. So there's some opportunities there to certainly tie that is, in the grander scheme of things, but we concentrate strictly on the drive-in site itself.
Yeah, I think there's, one of the reasons why I think there may be some value in at least noting it on the conceptual plan is that I do believe that even though it's a modest component of the overall project, I do believe it attracts funding. I mean, these types of projects, having been involved in getting federal funding for a lot of bike trail projects, including the one here in Yarmouth and Dennis, putting something like this on your concept plan, your master plan, even though the design of it has yet to be concluded, sends a signal to some funding sources about the potential investment in a project like this. And investments in bike trails will continue. In fact, several other Cape towns are now looking at doing lateral connections in their communities, and they see the bike trail, believe it or not, as an economic development piece. These kinds of connections to places like this site are often seen both as a public transportation or a public benefit, but also having significant economic development upside. So one of my recommendations would be, even if it's conceptual in nature, I think in the overall concept plan, I would recommend noting that, having it included, if indeed that is part of your recommendation, I would strongly support that and I would note that. I do believe this project overall, having been involved in funding similar projects like this, I do think will attract grant funds. I really do. I think it'll attract federal funding. I do think it'll attract state funding, and I do think the town share, if the magnitude we're talking about is $10 million, I think, I think the town is in a very good position to attract significant levels of state and federal funding, and I'd be more than happy to participate and help out in that way. In the past, there's also been, as you know, currently there is marine aquaculture that goes on on the site. We actually have aquaculture activities there. And I know some other aquaculture, shellfish growers have looked at the site. So from a wastewater point of view, I mean, it's great that we've got a pump station noted there, but from a nutrient-loading, removal point of view, doing more shellfishing in that whole Parker's River watershed has a huge upside in terms of dealing with our wastewater needs. And so are you still thinking about, or is there still, are we going to keep space out there to do aquaculture in the future going forward? Is that, I see some heads nodding.
Well, I think we believe that, you know, those concepts of aquaculture and the upweller and tying into the blue economy, and they're talking about a blue trail, I think is what it's called, and be able to tie in the educational opportunities of demonstrating, you know, what is an upweller and how do you grow a clam? So those types of uses are certainly things that would be beneficial to, again, drawing people to that area.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, just in my, in just in my brief interactions with some of the people that I've worked with at the University of Massachusetts in Dartmouth, their marine science program, I mean, there is interest, I know, at the university level to find some way to connect marine programs that do serve Cape students for a place or a presence where even if there's a lab or a field station, where there might be interest in collaborating with higher education on the, because if you're going to do the aquaculture, then it becomes what happens is it sort of almost itself leverages other potential possibilities. I flagged this for Brian Howes, who runs the marine science program at UMass Dartmouth, as that's something that was at least under consideration here at the site, that is the aquaculture piece, and looking at ways to maybe expand that or enhance that in some way.
Mark, I think that Lewis Pond area would be a perfect candidate for that in regards to aquaculture.
There you go. There you go. I think, quite frankly, I might, from, I'm not a scientist or a biologist, but I do think that the town has significant marine aquaculture opportunities here. Just as we revisit our wastewater planning and looking at revising and changing and updating our wastewater overall plan, I mean, one of the things that I'd like to see us do is spend a lot more time looking at the shellfish side, to what degree can aquaculture and shellfish growing enhancing that part of our community, what that can do to reduce the overall cost and financial burden. Other towns are doing it, Mashpee's doing it. I know they're making a huge investment, and Thalmud is as well, so I think it potentially could be an area of opportunity here as well. But I generally, I'm generally in support of all of your recommendations. I'm very excited about this. And actually, what has actually, what I've fed off the excitement of many of the committee members and the people that have followed this project. I'm also cognizant of the concerns that many of the neighbors have raised. I too, I'm a little bit concerned, I'll be perfectly honest. You know, an extended boardwalk has huge opportunities, but on the other hand, it still needs to be studied from a variety of points of view in terms of how far you can go. So I'm pleased that you've taken a sort of a cautious approach. I mean, but the only way we're going to know how much everything is going to really cost us is to take the next step and begin the design process and at least get into the permitting process to some degree on this, because it'll be those reviews, those inputs that will help us refine the costs. So what everybody needs to understand is we're talking $10 million now, but those estimates, as we take additional iterations of the whole project development, I think those cost estimates will become further refined. But we're going to, at some point, have to make a step and say, okay, we're going to have to submit something so that we can get more input. And I'm not sure whether or not we have enough funds to do that. That may be a town meeting decision that might be warranted. But let me also, just one final comment. I've talked to the town staff about the amount of money that you've spent on this, and I'm just blown away at how incredibly cautious and careful you've been in spending town money. I can't think of any other project that has been able to deliver this much conceptual planning and public involvement and engagement on a very modest budget. So however you work that out with the consultants and the rest of the team, I think, I just want to applaud you for being very judicious in spending town dollars and getting a lot out of this.
Well, Mark, a lot of credit, you just got to, a lot of credit goes to the town staff, who's really stepped up and participated and worked very well with Beta to help us to get to where we're at. So it was really a team effort by a whole group of people to kind of get to where we're at.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of other communities spend considerably more money to get their projects this far, so you're all to be commended for doing what you've been doing. So, thank you.
Other questions, Covets?
I'd like to thank everyone that was involved for your hard work. I attended most of your meetings, was very impressed with the way you conducted them, the professionalism, the courtesy that you extended to people who the professionalism, the courtesy that you extended to people who lived in the area and those that lived outside of the area, and the way you continually focused and refocused on what you were doing, as Mark says, in a financially responsible way. Actually, much more than that, really. Kathy and Karen did a terrific job here and a great amount of work, and I'd like to thank them as well and other staff as well. First of all, my first comment is I'm glad that the committee feels constrained to stick to the original purpose for which this property was taken. I was at that town meeting in 1985, which I guess doesn't say much for my life expectancy, but my generation, when we were young people, acquired that property. We didn't want to see it developed. For years, it had been earmarked for Marina, but that turned out not to be feasible. But it was very clear that the intent of that town meeting was so that this didn't fall into other hands, that it was reserved for the people of this community. And I would be adamantly opposed to changing that use at any time. So I'm happy that you want to stay the course there. Jim, you mentioned something that's near and dear to me in terms of my view about participating in town government, when you said this is like a quality of life issue. There's got to be, and I've said this a million times, there has to be more than living in this town than paying taxes and, you know, having your roads plowed and things like that. The Cultural Center's a great example of something that I would consider to be a quality of life amenity, Bass Hole and Flax Pond and other resources that we have. I share David's comments that this, conceptually, is something that will be used and enjoyed by residents as well as visitors. I don't think it's an either or proposition. I see plenty of opportunity for both uses here. You gave us a lot of material. I don't really have a position at this point in terms of the boardwalk or how far it's going to extend. There's a lot of studying to be done on this. There's a lot of financial considerations. There's a lot of neighborhood considerations to go through. But what I am committed to at this point is the interim use concept, which you want to make more of a permanent type use of the drive-in site, to host various functions. And I think that's a great idea. I think we need a place like that in town. You could have flea markets there, you could have farmers' markets there, you could have musical events there. You could do almost anything. Cultural events like the Irish Festival. You could extend that to other groups like, you know, Italian festivals and things like that. I've never been, but I understand Mashpee has a big one in August every year. They have an outside Italian festival and people eat out there and they drink wine and there's Italian music and things like that. You could do those types of thematic things. And I think we should go forward on that right away. This property has been dormant for 30 some odd years, and it's a great town resource, and we should utilize it right away, I think. But in terms of, you know, design, we got cost factors. I do have concerns about an extended boardwalk. Again, I have not made up my mind about it, but I have some concerns about it. The chief was at one of the meetings and he supports it. I'm not so sure that it wouldn't avail itself more to vandalism than with the two possible exits for mischievous people that might be out in the middle of that boardwalk, whereas one that doesn't go all the way through would be a lot easier to contain. I also have pollution concerns about a boardwalk that goes all the way across. People may be eating things or sandwiches with paper products that they might be discarding along the way. However, if I read your report correctly, you have even the abbreviated version of the boardwalk design so that down the road, if the town deemed it appropriate, they could extend that and still end up with the full version, if you will, of the boardwalk. But there's a lot of things to think about here, and I did not attend the deliberative portions of your agreement for obvious reasons. I don't think that would be appropriate. But I did hear the people speak, I did hear the consultants, I did view the property. And you guys did all of that and much, much more. So I cannot, I cannot think of a committee that I've seen come before this board since I've been here in the last five years that's done such a remarkable job on a project, and I commend all of you and thank all of you.
Thank you. So just a couple of, unless there's any other questions, just a quick couple of wrap-ups, a couple of things, just to address a few things. We took into concern, obviously, the issues of crime and trash. I think I pointed out to the Big Belly. One of the neighbors in the Gateway Isles is a security expert and gave us some recommendations about making sure that when we design our park area, that our police cruisers aren't required to stop and get out and walk around the facilities, that they can see it all from their vehicle. So some of those types of concerns were taken into consideration as far as that whole, and again, that all gets into when you, if you decide to move forward, where you'll find out those details again when you get to the development process. I will point out that the people of Sandwich thought that a boardwalk was such a wonderful idea, that they just voted $2 million to build another boardwalk in Sandwich. So it's an item that provides a great amount of appeal. I just came back from, while you are, a town meeting. I went to Jekyll Island, Georgia, and they have a boardwalk that goes through the estuary there that was greatly used. So everywhere I see them, they're used. But the point I want to make and wrap this up is that I think we all recognize that the town of Yarmouth has a diamond that we're sitting on and we should polish it off. We've presented to you what we believe is the best use of this property. It's now up to you to move forward in a way that you, as the policymakers of our community, see fit. Again, we think that the incremental approach that we recommend in our five steps is the way to go. Let's get the park utilized while we start working on conceptual issues with regards to the walk. Hash out any final details about a boardwalk, whether it's going to be short, long, or otherwise. Get some cost figures going. So that while we're still utilizing the site, we're developing and looking towards the future in a way that's financially responsible to the taxpayers. We just don't want to go out and spend, you know, $10 million for nothing. We want to make sure we do it right. But I would thank my fellow committee members and staff and Beta for really, you know, cracking down on getting this done. And I know it seemed like a long time, 17, 18 meetings, but as you all know, that's kind of record time for some things. I think we passed a town meeting that we started when I was a selectman a long time ago.
We know when you were a selectman.
So that's our presentation. The ball is now in your court, and we look to be discharged from our service, I think is the next step that we're looking for. I know Karen's probably not, but...
Tracy's about to...
Can I ask Chris for one thing?
Yep.
Karen Green, Community Development Director. Just as we're getting into the season, into the summer season, and there is interest in the site and utilizing the site for special events, we have with staff, I know Jeff Colby's here and he's been part of the drive-in site all along. Jeff, Kathy, Kelly and I have all been out to the site. We've been out with a contractor trying to look at very short-term improvements. And it would be nice to know, you know, we don't have funding yet. We do have our eyes on some funding, but if the board was supportive of that, we'd keep moving forward with that kind of immediately.
I'm definitely supportive of that.
I make a motion that we support in concept the proposal that's been put before us and continue moving forward to look at each step as it comes, as been presented to us tonight, including the steps of the temporary use and the cost associated with that.
Does that second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm not sure if the disbanding of this committee is...
Well, I don't think that's a good idea.
I thought you liked it.
Well, we can vote tonight to reappoint them again.
No, we may want them back for some further discussion and input and to clarify some issues as we go.
I can't speak for the rest of my committee, but I'm sure we'll be willing to stand by and shall you need us again, be willing to listen to.
There is a motion on the floor, Eric, but I just wanted to clarify because he asked to be dismissed, that that...
I did.
That was not part of my motion.
I was hoping to slide that one by.
At this particular time.
If you got this late hour, you might have not paid attention.
I vote nay on that.
Well, let's get to that separately. I have a thought on that, so.
Okay. Any further, any discussion on the motion?
The only thing I could ask is that we possibly put something in about when, the next time we hear from, you know, the next step in terms of the cost and, you know, I don't know if we want to take it in pieces.
I think we're hoping to hear from, this is what would be the next step.
We would have information very shortly regarding the interim use.
Okay.
The permanent use, but temporary improvement.
Interim, which are permanent.
I think, you know, I think, well, first of all, let's vote, and then maybe we can have just a little bit of a discussion about, you know, next step moving forward and how that might involve some of the committee that has been involved so far, so.
Only discussion I have, I'm not sure what the motion means exactly, because it talks about moving forward and there's all kinds of different alternatives within...
Yeah, but there's five recommendations here and steps, and basically moving in that order of the recommendation would be in concept at this point in time what I would support.
Well, Mr. Reed's suggestion was that we talk about it, digest it, and then agree to discuss it again at a further meeting. But, you know, that was basically, we're giving our support of the concept.
Sure.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may possibly help you move forward with some of this, if you, these were our recommendations, so if you were to say, make a motion to accept recommendation, number one, retain drive-in property for recreational use, all those in favor, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then do each one of those, then you're going to give us more direct input as to what you need us to do, if you need us to do anything.
Well, personally, I support all of them in that particular order. So, I mean, it's a one step, figuring out what that is to go to number two, to go to number three, to go to number four. I mean, it's basically in concept.
What if we moved one through three? And that would take a while to work on those things, and then we could discuss and refine where we go from there.
So we're going to piecemeal the process?
No, it's not piecemealing it. It's just, you know, you can't put the roof on before you dig the foundation.
Well, that gives us an opportunity to continue researching with regards to the discussions of the boardwalk, and you can still move forward with getting to the point of being able to utilize it while you're trying to figure out the rest of it.
The itself is presenting some alternatives that I think we have to hash out before we kind of say we agree to everything.
Are you interested in proposing that as an amendment?
I would like to move that we accept.
Can we vote on my motion first and then...
Okay.
Well, if he chooses to amend it.
Yeah, I'll amend Tracy's motion to, that we accept recommendations, one, two, and including three at this point in time. And that's not to say we're not going to adopt any further ones. I'm just saying at this point in time, we'll move those first three.
Do we have the opportunity to ask questions?
No.
No.
Not this evening, no. Is there a second? All right. I don't hear a second at this point. Why don't we vote on Tracy's motion then at this stage, and then we can continue the discussion of how we move forward here. I think it's important to have a next step and get things in process so that, first of all, let's vote on Tracy's motion at this point. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I abstain, Mr. Chairman, because I don't know what the motion means.
Nay?
Abstain.
And abstatute, okay, fine. I think what we need to talk a little bit about, the next step, I think Karen, you talked about, you know, trying to get some interim use or going...
So, I mean, I think the next immediate step is whether or not the board wants us to proceed with looking into and looking for funding to prepare the site, the drive-in site part, to be better suited for kind of the special events. We've met with the organizers from the Irish Festival, kind of had an exit interview from the St. Patrick's Day Festival that they had. They're interested in moving forward with a summer event, and they have some ideas about the site layout and whatnot. They would require more parking. They used parking at the Lobster Boat. That wouldn't be available in the summertime. So we've been looking at the site, trying to identify other areas for parking, trying to keep a kind of circulation on there. The site's not perfect, but we're looking for kind of just the, honestly, the cheapest way to make the improvements to accommodate a music festival is what they're looking for.
I have questions on that. I think that personally, the next step would be coming up with the process of which these events are going to happen. Will there be a fee associated with that?
We'd have to establish one.
So that's what I would think that the next steps would be, is that you come up with a proposal, cost included, whatever it is, the policies, and come back as the first step. If there's a fee associated with that, perhaps the person who wants to use it could make the upgrades in exchange for the fees. That would be...
Yeah, I don't know that the upgrades will equal what a reasonable fee would be, kind of what would they'd be willing to spend. But I just think, no, I mean, your direction is useful because of just timing. And in order to kind of pull off an event in the summer, they need to get going marketing sooner. So if it's, you know, if we're in a position where we're not ready to proceed for good reasons, then it's good to know. It's just good information to be able to share with the event organizer, and we'll wait.
So do you know the process of which it's going to take to accumulate the cost?
We don't have a cost.
I know.
So we've met with the, right, so I can't, we can't...
So, but are you going to go out and get...
So rather than grill Karen, can, you know, I hate to interrupt Tracy, but that's, you know, she doesn't have any of that information at this point.
It looks like she's asking us for a direction.
Well, this is the drive-in site utilization committee. Why don't we charge them with developer, using, working with staff to develop this policy and then bring it to us for approval?
For how you want to go about conducting events on the site.
I mean, no, you tell us how, I mean...
No, but what you direct the committee to do.
Is the committee interested in...
Well, I think you have a couple of issues that you got going on. First one is, let's find out, what is it going to cost and what is the process to make the site usable in the most expeditious timeframe? So I think if the selectmen were to give staff the charge to get that answer and then come back to you, then you can know if there's additional funding that's going to be required to succeed that way and how you get to that. Once you know that, once the committee, if you were to charge us, knows that, okay, yeah, you're good with us spending X amount of dollars to make it usable, then the question becomes, how do you use it? What types of fees are you going to charge? How many people are you going to allow? What types of vents that you'd allow? What zoning will allow? But I think step one is for you to give us permission to get the costs to make it usable, and then have you say, okay, that's good, let's get it usable. And while you're getting it usable, put together your plan as to how it's going to be used, is it ticketing, is it pricing, and whatever you want to do to actually utilize the venue as a separate charge than figuring out what it's going to cost to get it up to run it. We've already done a lot of that research already. As Karen has said, staff has been out there and looked at the property and done some walkthroughs and identified some soft spots and, you know, and met with some recommendations from people who are interested in using it. But I think that's a step that we got to go to next is, do you agree that we should use this on a permanent basis? If the answer is yes, do you agree to allowing us to move forward with finding the cost to make it a usable site?
I think we just voted yes to that.
I think you voted yes to that, yeah. And I think it's just a matter now of, if we can just give staff the direction to move ahead and... we can just give staff the direction to move ahead, and I think we have a general consensus on that, to have the staff move ahead utilizing the committee and partnership with the committee to develop that information and the proposals so that we understand where we're going.
Okay.
I think that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, also, I believe Mr. Nappick mentioned earlier that DPW might be able to play a part in this in regards to some of the excavation and grade work and so forth.
I think that's certainly at the end in terms of allocation of staff resources to determine what's needed along the way.
So, now that we've put that part of it to rest, go back to our charge. Are we dismissed or do you have a revised charge as selectmen totally suggests? And if so, if it's something you want to put together now, or bring us back when you have had time to think of a charge, I think we're receptive to either way.
That's the charge.
If I, well, if I may, what we could do in the intervening time between this meeting and the next meeting, work with the chair and the board members to talk about what that could look like the next charge, because I think there's a lot of good merit to it, you know, so, but we'd like to have a chance to craft something to present to you.
I agree.
I think that makes sense. Okay. I mean, we still have, we have a substantial report. I think there's several of us that'd like to go through that a couple more times and digest it fully.
There is a lot of information, and I would tell you the key to all of this is flexibility and our ability to be creative as far as moving forward. This is the pie in the sky, but we can certainly achieve great things at creative ways, such as using staff for scraping around and other ways, getting naming rights and other ways to come up with funding. So, don't let the dollar amounts scare you.
All right. Well, thanks so much again.
Thank you for listening to us. It's been an interesting process, and we'll get back with you with more info.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to Board of Selectmen, Boarding Committee actions. I think, Mark, you have appointments?
Yeah, I just have, I have a few items before the board.
Why don't you take just a second and let people file out here. All right. Go ahead.
Do you want to ask them to take their conversation outside or...
I think they're making their way out. I don't have it.
All right, well...
I think we're all set.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
I'd like to move that we accept the resignation of Bob Isador from the human rights, the Barnstable County Human Rights Commission. Effective, well, effective now.
I make that motion with thanks.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. It carries. We have another reservation, resignation, excuse me. Frank Martin is stepping down from the Recycling and Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so we need a motion to accept his resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries. Thank you. And finally, with respect to the Conservation Commission, we have a reappointment and an appointment. So, we need a motion to appoint Mr. Paul Huggins as a regular member to the Conservation Commission and reappoint Ms. Eleanor Lawrence as a regular member to the Conservation Commission for three-year terms running through June 2021.
Then we'll move those up.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much, Mark. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of January 9th, 2018.
I move to accept.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Let's see, upcoming agenda review. We have no meeting on the 29th. June 5th is the next meeting.
June 5th is, though it looks like there's a lot, I don't think it'll be that in-depth, but it also, it's a 6 o'clock start because we had to do a notification for the public hearings that are on there. So, I didn't have a choice other than to start it at 6:00, so.
Okay, traditionally, for the goals discussion, we've had everyone forward their goals in to the chair and then accumulated that and tried to reach a consensus with regard to the items that were submitted and then talked those over. So, if everyone would do that, we can move that process along. And then we'd have the final discussion on June 19th. Any other comments or additions at this point to the agenda?
One of the only things that we talked about, Norm, was the blue economy. I know they were talking about it tonight with pieces of this, but perhaps having a presentation by the Cape Cod Blue Economy folks to talk about what they're looking at, what the options are to connect with that.
The Cape Cod what?
Blue Economy Projects.
Have we approached them?
I've heard the presentation before. There's a lot of information that they've got. I think that they were, they've been paid for through the Cape Cod Chamber. I'm not sure they're doing boards and selectmen yet. They came to the Cape Town Selectmen and Councilors and gave us a presentation that was very useful in trying to utilize your blue economy. And I guess just after listening to what we had today, it's...
I can help add some clarity to this. I'm on the steering committee for the Blue Economy Committee that the Chamber created, and I do think at some point it would be helpful for the board to get maybe a presentation. They are making a series of briefings on just what the blue economy is. I think it may be of some value to also invite to that presentation some of our own Economic Development Committee people, some of our own folks that are working with us on economic development in town. The project coordinator is someone that I've worked with for years, Leslie Ann McGee. I don't know if she gave the presentation that...
It was Bert.
It was Bert Jackson, okay. Leslie Ann has been the project coordinator. She's brilliant, and she also works at the Robotics Lab at Woods Hole Oceanographic, I think. She is very, very talented. I would recommend, again, it's just a question of timing at when to do it, but I think it would be, they would provide a lot of very useful and interesting information that would be of value to not just us, but also other town committees as well.
So, you feel comfortable following up with them to see when they might be interested?
I would be more than happy if that's the desire of the board.
Well, I think town staff should do that.
We'll follow up with that.
That's fine. Okay. All right, that sounds good.
I think at some point, we should address the issue that the lady talked about tonight with people adversely impacting neighborhoods with all kinds of junk in their yards and things. We talked about doing a bylaw a year or two ago on that, but I guess...
We need to hear from Mark on that for sure.
We just never got to it.
So, let me, so since last year, Mark reactivated the Housing Task Force, which brings together police, fire, inspections, and health, and they meet on a regular basis on these problem properties. And they do go out on a really regular basis and go out and issue citations. I will say that the tools in their toolbox aren't really that robust, and when you get cases when people don't want to do something, it gets very difficult. But I've asked Mark to compile in an Excel spreadsheet format, the list of addresses, what their status is. It's, I think it's over 100 deep now. It's, you know, the pictures are here. I mean, you just, we had a fire the other day at Higgins Grove. That was one of the houses on the problem property. There were cars in that lot that were tagged as being violators. They were supposed to be cleaned up. And I can tell you, getting like a weekly briefing from Mark, this is incredibly frustrating. Of course, the problem is, it's to get a bylaw at the town meeting, everybody's like, oh, I didn't know this was going on in town. But nobody wants to necessarily give you the tools to come into somebody's yard and say, this is what's going on. So, we have to, he'll give you the lowdown. We can schedule that for sometime in probably July, what he's up against, some of the ideas that he's got to be able to do this. In the state budget last year, there was money to put a housing court judge out of Barnstable County, which is helpful because superior court judges haven't been really great to work with on these topics. Housing court judges, this is their thing. This is what they do. But we, there is room for us to improve a few things. And I think, you know, this, these pictures that are behind me and just your own drive around town, you know what the challenges are in front of us. It really becomes a matter in this form of government, how do you convince enough town members, town meeting members to come and vote for that without thinking like we're going to be in there snooping, measuring the height of grass and all this other stuff that people sometimes think is what we're doing.
Some of those properties may be opportunities for affordable housing and, you know, for rehabs that, you know, might be interesting for...
There is another component to your point is absentee landlords are a lot of problems, and then there's a mental health aspect. And that is hugely significant, is that a lot of times we're finding, we're dealing with folks, they got challenges. And it's the Hoarders Task Force is pretty active in Barnstable County, and we're not alone. That's the one comfort I can give you. But there's many layers to this onion, and Mark has been all over it, using the tools that he has. But I'd love to, you know, this is one of his goals, is to come in front of you to show you what he's been up against, so.
We might target something for midsummer then, and, you know, if we could, you know, Holly essentially had examples from other communities. I don't know if there's policies or...
Yeah, there's bylaws and from other communities.
Bylaws and so forth.
Absolutely, yeah.
You know, certainly if we could pull that kind of information together as well, I think that'd be helpful for us. Okay.
One of the other things that we had talked about and was the lights for the dog park. I know that that issue's been worked out.
I think Carl's gone. Carl has been dealing with that? I think we're good.
I'm not sure we're good. I'm not sure. We have a group. We have, we seem to have two groups working now, and at some point in time, I'd like an update briefly, even if it's in...
Well, the dog park...
Yeah.
Yeah, so the group that's already been established, now there's a second group, so...
My understanding was from a couple of weeks ago, everything, everybody's working on the same plan, but I'll get...
Okay, well, I just want to be sure of that. The other thing I would like to put on the agenda, possibly, I'm not sure if we could do it before we do our goals, is I feel, I feel like this is just my observation, that our relationship with the Chamber has declined. And I'm not sure what's going on with that in the business community, but I would like to see if maybe we could ask the Chamber what their goals are for the year and see if we can look at that, if they have it already, to see if there's things there that we can work together on instead of working separately. Perhaps we could just ask them if they have a document of which they're working on so we can see if there's any alignment.
Director has reached out to us as recently as yesterday, maybe?
This afternoon.
Yeah, this afternoon to talk about what their communication from their leadership is to us to start that dialogue.
Is there, is there...
We had a, you know, we put together an informal working group last year. It met about four, five, six times. You know, one of the things I'd say to everybody that participates is it sometimes boils down into like how things used to be. And you can't move forward if you keep bringing up how things used to be, because it's not like that anymore. We have a lot of new folks, and there's a lot of desire, a lot of energy. I'm more than willing to talk about all these desire lines and, you know, but are we asking questions about how resources from the town have been allocated? No question we are. But I just find sometimes we get stumbled on a lot of issues because that's just the way it used to be, and I can't operate in that environment. It's very difficult for us. But we did meet for a number of months, and I'd like to reactivate that group to some degree. But that's certainly an ongoing conversation. We'll start with the Chamber Director.
Okay, Carl's back.
I don't know if you wanted to delve into that question.
Well, no, I just, at some point in time, I wanted to get an update on the, what's appeared that could potentially be, and I'm not sure that this is, two different groups that are working on the dog park and where we are with that. But I'm not sure if the board wants to hear now, to be honest. I don't know. Maybe you could just...
I could be happy to sit down with you. There is a couple of groups that seem to be formulating as, I hate to say clicks, but clicks down there. And I want to try to pull them together as one group so they're all working in the same direction, things aren't being duplicated, and try to alleviate some of the finger pointing at, well, this one's not doing that or this one. So, I'm going to hopefully have a meeting in the next couple of months, most likely actually in June, to try to pull some people together, pull the Friends for Yarmouth Dog Park together and try to, you know, bring some of those groups together to keep that one group going.
Great. Thank you. That's what I was hoping for.
Absolutely.
It's a great, it's a great place, very high use, and they do a lot of good work. So, I'd like to see them all working together. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And was there a question on lighting?
No, the lighting is what spurred my thought of it.
Yes, I've actually applied for a grant, and it's, I haven't, I don't have the final paperwork on it, but it's forthcoming. That will provide us the funding to do some solar lighting there.
Good. All right. Thanks, Carl.
Thank you.
Okay, individual items. Mark?
I just want to, once again, congratulate Eric and you, Norm, for your election. Eric was quoted in the newspaper the other day as saying that it was a great board, and he enjoyed working with it, and I would have to say the same thing. So, I've enjoyed, this has been my year now, and it's been a real pleasure having the opportunity to work together as a board over the past year. So, thank you for that. And Tracy, thanks for being a good chairman for the past year. I thought you did a great job, and thanks for your mentorship and your help and your advice.
Thank you, Mark.
Mike?
I would like to congratulate both of you also for your, on your re-elections and like Tracy, thank Tracy for her services, chair for the last year. Yesterday, I was at a alcohol compliance seminar at the police station that's put on by Phil Magnuson. And that's the one where the businesses have to go to that every other year to be updated on the various rules and regulations, and in particular this year, the amendments that the board passed to the local rules and regulations. He brought a young investigator, Jamie, I forget his last name. I have his, I'm looking for his card. I probably left it home. But we got talking after, here it is, we got talking after the seminar, and Beninda, B-I-N-I-E-N-D-A. He's an investigator for the ABCC. And we got talking about the Yarmouth and what we're doing with alcohol, regulations and oversight and so forth. And I'm pleased to tell you that, he said that we're way ahead of most establishments, I mean, towns, in the way we regulate our establishments throughout the state of Massachusetts. And he said he's been to every city and every town in Massachusetts. And he further said that he, what he's trying to do now is get the other towns on the Cape to follow our lead, to follow where we are in terms of the procedures that we're setting up and the educational opportunities and so forth. So, that was, that was a nice thing to hear, and, you know, we've all done a lot of hard work on that. And despite the fact that from time to time we have hearings of possible violations, I guess they're few and far between compared to most other towns. So, I think this educational approach is working, and it's nice to hear input from somebody that's removed from the situation and can give an objective assessment as to where Yarmouth is on that, on that particular issue.
Okay. Thank you. Tracy?
Congratulations. I said it before, but I'll say it again. It was my honor to serve as chair. I appreciate you all having the faith in me to do that, and I look forward to your year as well. Norm, anything I can do to help, support.
Thank you, Tracy.
I'm here. I like, I am like Mark to think that we have a good board, so I appreciate that. The only other thing I want to say is there's, I don't know if people at home can see this information. I know we have some contracts in here, but it's a lot. And I know you guys do the best you can to get us information, but today we were given a lot of information here. And I prefer to try to get that as much in advance as possible. It's just too much... It's just too much to digest when, when it's gotten so late. I know you guys are extremely busy and shorthanded, but you know, I want, I want it all.
Sometimes the documents, I can't control the size of them or the time in which I get them, but I try to get them as expediently to you as possible.
If you could, that would be great.
This happened to be an exceptionally large situation. I would doubt about it.
No, but it's just a lot to process, so if you could do that, that would be great. And I think we should thank staff for all their work being put into town meeting. I know this is our after-action review, and I forgot to say it. I know that there's an awful lot of hours and time that go into that. And I appreciated your, your update in recognizing our shortcomings and knowing where we needed to work on. But all in all, I think staff did a good job once again preparing.
Thank you. It is a huge lift, and they do a great job.
Congratulations, Norm. I almost stopped by your house on my way home from getting signs, but I was wet, it was raining outside, so I didn't join your party. And thank you, Tracy. It is a good board, you know? I think the paper embellished a little when they said great, but...
You mean it was fake news?
I think I said barely tolerable, but it got printed as great. No, but I think, you know, Tracy's right. We do do, I mean, this is a lot of work. There's no doubt about that. That's why very few people run to sit in these chairs. You know, to Tracy's point, I wasn't going to bring it up, but since she did, I know Linda is out, but we had an instance where, what did we get? 15, 20 emails today? And one of them was time-sensitive. There was an event that happened on the 17th, and we got the email today on the 22nd. You know, we got, I had somebody email me and ask me, are you coming to the Memorial Day events? And I said, well, what Memorial Day events?
Right here. I just got it.
Well, again, when somebody sends something to the selectman email and a week later they're asking us if we're attending, that's unacceptable, short-staffed or not. And this, you know, the thing on the 17th, we completely missed it. So, you know, that has happened in the past, and it's rare, but not only is it unacceptable, but it's embarrassing. I do not like when people ask me, did you get that email I sent? Or if they ask me a question and I have no idea what they're talking about. So, you know, that can't happen. Like I said, it doesn't take very long to screen emails and forward them when they come into the selectman account. Invitations, time-sensitive events and materials, they have to get to us in a timely manner. So that's all I have.
First of all, I want to thank Tracy. This last year, I think it's been a year of accomplishment through your leadership. And I think you led us through a very difficult time in the last 60 days that would have challenged the best of people, and you really stepped up to it. And I think offered a great deal to the community, so, so thank you for all you did.
Thank you, Norm.
I want to thank the voters for reelection and congratulate Eric. I said to Eric earlier, I really wanted to beat him in one precinct and was unable to do that. But I appreciate the confidence that the voters have shown and look forward to the next three years and will look forward to hard work getting our agenda accomplished. So, there's a couple of things. I saw in the newspaper today, an article about DY scholarships, and I thought that that was really uplifting. For six students to be awarded very substantial scholarships moving forward, I thought was, was terrific. And congratulations to those students and thank you to the benefactors that were involved in that.
I think they were $40,000 a piece.
Yeah. Very substantial.
No, $10,000 for four years, I think, times six.
That's right.
So 240 grand.
So, you know, those kids really have a significant opportunity with that kind of money being awarded to them, so. And I see Jeff still here. I stopped in today at the transfer station. And going from scholarships to transfer station, I know it's quite a, quite a leap, but there is so much confusion right now with the transfer station with what goes where. I went around three times before I could figure out where to put my paper bags and brown paper bags and stopped at the, and asked the question. And even after I asked the question, I still had trouble figuring out where to put them. With the changes that have occurred, it's just, you know, it's, it's tough to figure out what to do. And I'm afraid that people are going to get frustrated and end up just throwing stuff away because they're, they don't know where to put what they've got, you know? So anything more we can do in terms of communication, I think would be helpful in that regard. So I don't have anything else. Move on to consent agenda and discussion items.
Yep. On the consent agenda, there's some donations. I'd ask for a motion to accept those.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Anything else on Administrator Anderson?
Yeah. Tomorrow is a big day. We're supposed to be accepting the estimates for the Bass Hole Boardwalk repair. And we had a really good amount of respondents that took out packages. It's over 11 from what I understand, so we'll see what we get for numbers tomorrow. They have a deadline of 45 days if they get accepted to do the project, so we would hope that it all comes back favorable to that point so that we can get the boardwalk up and running by July 4th or thereabouts.
Good.
That's critical to everybody's desire line for sure. The other thing that, we recently had another meeting with the Tri-Town Wastewater Group on, last Friday. I think we came up with a pretty good strategy for the summer moving forward. There's going to be some invitations that are going to be given out to the boards for the meetings in July and August. Different state officials are asked to provide a opportunity to hear what we're doing, and we're trying to enlist some assistance in that effort with them. So that, I'll have some more information with you coming shortly on that as well. We do have a meeting with Barnstable on that side of things with their contact for the Lewis Bay issue. That's for next issue. That's, yeah, next week, the 31st, I think it is, will be with them. So that's been long awaited to get that started off as well. So we're pretty happy about getting that moving forward. The other, I'm just looking for my agenda here real quick. There's some information here on the outline of the Memorial Day Ceremony. I'll pass this out to you. There's a couple of other things in your packet to bring to your attention, is we did get a little bit of a bump, a slight bump in our community development block grant funding. It's not something that we're going to be able to do a lot more with, but it's always good to have a positive trend as opposed to where it's been lately negative. And then I also included for your review for a little bit later on, I think there's going to be probably two proposals coming to you to name town properties or parts of properties in someone's honor. So I dug up the policy for that just so that you're prepared. If you could take a perusal of that when the time is appropriate, we'll put the proposals that we've been approached with for two different, one is up at Taylor Bray Farm, and the other one is an interesting concept. I sat with the family last week on the Packet Landing Facility and what the family is that will make in front of us eventually for a naming right there. So it's not something that comes around every day, but it's certainly, we do have a policy on it that I didn't want, want it to be a surprise to you as to what that procedure is, so. And then I think for part of goal-setting, we did do very well with Department of Technical Assistant Grants for some town work that will help advance the Urban Land Institute. We got some funding for that to get to part two of that. And then also, as part of outward-facing goals, tracking, and presentation, we're demoing, or actually it should be a pilot project. Chris can talk more about it, but we got funding for that project as well that will help the public see what we're working on from a board perspective and a department perspective. So if you want to bring everybody up to speed on that, Chris.
Well, I guess all I have is that we'll have a short presentation for the board at the next board meeting on the 5th to coincide with the goals discussion. So it'll be about kind of our suggestions or options for moving forward on how we can better share these goals, both internally amongst ourselves, but as well with the public to make the process much easier. So it's pretty innovative, and we'll have a really quick presentation to discuss more on the 5th.
I have a question on the Manichee School Project. I note that there's a presentation going to be made before MSBA.
Yeah. So that, that's kind of like what I would call a fine-tuning event where the entire project team, the OPM, the, and the architects and the school administration go up and pitch what's been the process to date to get them in a position, their board, to vote on the next round of activities. It was very much related to, you know, did you cover all your bases, your educational plan, you know, and the site location and all that? But it was all related to continuing to advance the ball forward. They have a meeting in June, I believe, is a board meeting, so they're trying to get that all debt, all set for their vote to allow the project to continue to its next phase. So essentially what we voted on, or what the school committee voted on to advance was the Station Avenue building.
So that would be to move beyond the feasibility stage?
Yeah. It's getting ready to commission the last leg and have that in a position to get in front of the, the community at a future date for funding, what that looks like. I mean, it's, it's like October still is the timeframe for what's going to happen there, you know? So they've narrowed down as much as they could narrow down at this phase.
Okay. Fair enough.
I might just add, on the Memorial Day Ceremony, 11:00 AM at Town Hall, that's the missing piece of invitation.
On Monday.
On Monday, on Memorial Day. That's correct. So there's a tent, there's quite a, quite of a array of folks there. I'm hoping for good weather. It was horrendous weather last year, but hopefully we'll have good weather and a good turnout.
She does a very good job, and she keeps it very, it's usually between a half hour, 45 minutes, so even in the rain, people show up. It's a, it's really great, so.
Nice job.
11:00.
Okay. Anything else?
No. I think that was a lot.
Okay. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.